Ladies and gentlemen, board members, we will call the May twenty fourth meeting in town. Forty five this quarter. Uh, Mr. Black is here representing the Western Carolina, Mr. Sealy representing Bowling Green. Mr. Long representing Fort Royal, Mr. Underwood representing Reed Church. I'm just representing Madison nine. Mr. Forehand was scheduled to zoom in, but I've just been informed that he will be here shortly after seven. So we will begin our meeting uh as is, and then we will get him during the break. So if we would, if we please stand for the invocation, I'll deliver the invocation. Let us pray. Dear Father God, we come before you to first thank you for your grace and your many blessings. We ask now that you give us all the wisdom, guidance needed to do what's right for the county of Caroline. We ask a special blessing on the families of Mrs. Either Taylor and Mrs. Joyce Fields who have just passed away. We ask now, Lord, that you would do that will. Let this meeting be for your glory. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen. You join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Opening board comments, Mr. Black.
Yes, I I just real briefly, I had an opportunity last night to attend Caroline High School's graduation ceremony, and I've been fortunate all the years I've been on the board to uh be able to attend that. And uh it was an awesome ceremony. Uh, the students uh who gave speeches did a wonderful job. Uh, the future is bright if that's our future. I um they all did wonderful and uh as they walked by, it was really interesting to see all the stalls, how they decorated all of them. So uh very, very unique in uh uh decorations, so they did a great job. And probably uh thing I was most proud of is the the crowd was very, very polite as far as when names were called out, we didn't hear too much shouting or uh which was was nice so you could got to hear every student's name, so um which was really nice. Uh, the other thing too, I know we have a bunch of uh teachers here and uh I finished my last day today, so in Pennsylvania and I think you guys are finishing up what tomorrow or um next day, so uh wish you guys have a great and restful summer and hopefully after tonight you can forget about this for a while and kind of go home and and relax a little bit. So have a great summer and that's that's my opening board comments.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have a couple of comments. I too attended graduation last night and that's probably I've been going to graduation for almost thirty years. I started on the school board in nineteen ninety two, going to graduation and have gone almost every year since then. So congratulations to the graduates and congratulations to the parents and the grandparents. Those who get the students through that whole period of time of school and and crises and all the ups and downs emotions that that school brings all of those folks. I I think a lot of the the presenters last night at the beginning of the program hit that home with their very son and sonary insightfulness of of what they'd all experienced, but I I will reflect on the one student, I don't remember his name. He was particularly good at speaking. He very rarely looked at the notes that he had, but he said, you know, when you're driving down the road and you hear that song, live in that moment because it does go away and I thought that really hit home and I will remember that. But congratulations to all the graduates for the class of twenty twenty three. I want to also today, today was an interesting day in that um I don't know if everybody realizes this, but there was a little bit of competition between departments and and some of the office holders for a food drive for the Caroline County food pantry, which is the main food pantry in the county. It's open from eight thirty to four thirty-five days a week. And I just want to talk a little bit about the the first place team, which brought in a tremendous amount of items was the building department, Parks and Rec, the library and social services. The second place team um was fire and rescue. And and I've got to give fire and rescue an additional bonus because they actually brought everything and brought most of the labor to actually transport everything upstairs, which I don't know if everybody realized the task that is. But when they rolled that cart onto the elevator, it dropped a good half inch and I thought we were going to have to call nine one one for the fire chief being stuck in the elevator, which everybody thought was pretty funny. The third place team was Public Works and Public Utilities. The fourth place team was County Admin, Treasurer, Commission, the Revenue and Economic Development. And I'm not going to make light of the fifth place team because every somebody's got to finish it bottom, but they're holding everybody else up and I will say that um from an old sports adage, somebody's got to hold everybody together and that was the the Circuit Court and the sheriff's office. But I want to applaud all the folks that donated. This is a difficult time of year to get food to the food pantry and I think this leverages the whole summer. And it really does make a tremendous difference to those folks that are in need. I'd like to remind everybody that Monday, the twenty ninth at eleven o'clock is a Memorial Day service. If it's raining, we'll we will be in Town Hall. It starts at eleven o'clock. And Clean Sweep was this last weekend and for people that don't know what Clean Sweep is, the town of Bowling Green and we actually brought a little further south um this year, actually advertises one big yard sale for the whole town. And I will say that that went extremely well. A lot of folks came and we actually had an added benefit this year and I want to thank Kathy Beard, she's on the Goodwill Board. We were actually able to get three Goodwill trucks to come at the end and pick up everything that that folks said they weren't going to yard sale anymore. And it all went to Goodwill, but it does help bring the community together. Folks got to meet their neighbors and see folks in town that they'd not met before. So I want to say that was a huge success and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those are my opening board comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy, Mrs. Long.
Several things have been covered, but I also wanted to extend thanks uh back uh two weekends ago on the thirteenth. Uh, Mr. Sealy was uh in attendance. The historic Port Royal Organization held a living history event. And uh they were calling for rain, but we had a good morning and a nice attendance. Uh, it was wonderful seeing some parents bring children to learn about the one-room schoolhouse and the Indian artifacts and watching them grind corn as well as uh Ms. Coleman was there to do her personation and and uh the museum was open, so I do appreciate that group reaching out uh and keeping our history alive. Um, congratulations to all the students who graduated. Uh, keep in touch with your friends, they'll be there, uh but expect change and growth. And uh we wish you the best, success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had just a just a couple as well. Um, first, I'd like to extend my condolences to the uh Fields family at the passing of First Lady Fields. Uh Reverend Fields and their family have been grateful the Reed Church community and dawn specifically, so certainly want to extend our heartfelt condolences. Um, secondly, certainly I want to congratulate those who participated in the food drive. I just think it was an outstanding effort. It just shows you what can be accomplished. Third, um certainly want to congratulate all of our graduates this year. I know it's been a tough two or three years, but they persevered and graduated and made it through. And finally, tomorrow night at six o'clock or six thirty, excuse me, I'm having a constituent meeting for the Reed Church District. You're all welcome to come and attend. And oh, I have a fairly lengthy agenda to discuss with the constituents. That's going to be at Meadow Event Park in the Pavilion at six thirty. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. I I've got a few, so forgive me. But it it appears I've started something wonderful with recognizing citizens when they have a one hundredth birthday. I've done three already and I've got three today. Um, and I'm going to ask if you know of anybody who's going to be a hundred, please let me know in advance so the county can prepare a resolution for them and either recognize them at the board meeting or wherever they are, but I have Mr. Willie Delmar Costin, who is actually a hundred and two and will be a hundred and three in November. And you know, like little kids, they they count five and a half, four and a half. So May would actually be his one hundred and second and a half birthday. So I will uh extend congratulations to him. Mrs. Loretta Wright, uh who is a hundred years old on October of last year and still does children's Bible study at Saint John Church. And Mrs. Eleanor Square, who turned a hundred on May seventh. And uh Sheriff Moser and I were at her celebration and she didn't look a day over sixty to me because she just strolled down the aisle, the sheriff will concur. That didn't didn't have a walker or cane or anything, so we're going to try to get her at a board meeting soon to congratulate her. Uh, I also attended the business appreciation reception last week, which is a great event. And I need to say thank you again to all the Caroline businesses. Uh, do want to say thank you to all the board members for attending the special call meeting on Monday and thank the school board for their appearance. Uh, we were there to discuss additional funding for raises for teachers and a significant maintenance project, and I'm sure we will confirm later in the meeting, but it appears that the board will increase funding to support teacher raises. Uh, I did offer during the prayer condolences again for uh Mrs. Taylor and Mrs. Fields, two folks who who've been in the county long and made significant contributions, so we did want to at least express our condolences. And I have one more, which is a little long, but please forgive me. Monday is of course Memorial Day. And that's the day when we honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. I'd like to honor today Silver Silver Star Awardee, Mr. Walter Lee Smith of Caroline County. PFC Smith was Caroline's first casualty of the Vietnam War. On August twenty ninth, nineteen sixty-six, Private First Class Smith distinguished himself by heroic actions while serving on a search and destroy mission near Kuchi, Republic of Vietnam. After a firefight, Private Lee was attempting to secure a wounded Vietcong prisoner. The prisoner pulled the pin on a grenade and attempted to throw it towards Private Lee's squad. Private Lee batted the grenade from his hand away from his squad, but was unable to save his own life. Private Lee, for his heroism and sacrifice, Private Lee was awarded the Silver Star posthumously. The Bible says, greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends. Today we say thank you to Private Lee. Let us remember him this day on Memorial Day. And that's my comments. We will uh begin the meeting with any amendments to the agenda. I don't know if we have any. We do have a subtraction, which is the minutes. No, I just said that. So I think we're good. Um, we will proceed with the agenda as is with the subtraction of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda with the with the uh subtraction of the approval of minutes.
Is there a second? Mr. Black seconds. Mr. Sealy's motion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will begin with presentations. Uh, Dr. O from the Rappahannock Area Health District. Obasanjo, correct? I wanted to get it right. So, okay. I can say Oshay. Oshay. That's thank you in Ibo. Yoroba. And Dr. O has a presentation for us on OPR opioid harm reduction. Dr. O?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Obasanjo as a chairman.
That was close.
Close enough, as Chairman mentioned. Last time I was here with you, I was last year to present uh a community health assessment. Um, this uh presentation today is sort of a follow-up to that. Um, uh, if you remember, our community health assessment, our three uh uh focus areas were access to care, access to healthcare, mental health and housing. Um, we developed before, through and beyond the uh community health assessment partnerships, uh including partnerships with the Rappahannock Area Health uh CSP, who Eleni is here from them and she'll she'll be helping me with the today's presentation. And the partnership with them and with the community is what we want, one of the things we want to do today, which is about opioid harm reduction. It's a topic uh that is somewhat misunderstood and we want to to share sort of sort of our our uh our ideas about it with you. So this is our overview of what we'll be talking about. I'll be talking, I have three slides on data and then Eleni will be uh doing a more deeper dive into harm reduction. So this first slide is uh uh data on opioid-related death rates, you know, for all the uh five counties in PD sixteen. Uh, so as you can see, uh, none of our counties is at the same or is lower than the Virginia death rate. Uh, Caroline, as you can see, is the highest uh rate uh in PD sixteen. Uh, for frame of reference, the United States death rate is somewhere about thirty for a hundred thousand. Now, the next slide is the actual number of deaths in Caroline County from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. And as it's clear, it's trending up. Now, the 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 footstomp I want to do about this slide and the next slide is this is not rates, these are actual numbers, these are individuals. So these are mothers, fathers, children, friends, lovers of each and every one of us in this community. What those numbers are. The next slide is the emergency room visit over the same period. And the interesting thing about both slides is one's going up and one's going all over the place. And when I when I first saw the slide, it it's sort of I I questioned what it meant when deaths are going up and emergency room visits seem to just be flat all over the place. And you know, we after kind of looking at the data and thinking about it and doing a bit of research, um it looks like people are just taking drugs by themselves more and more, which is a problem. Uh, I'm kind of leading to this picture. I will leave this uh uh my my part of presentation and to Eleni.
Hi, everybody. I'm Eleni McNeil. I'm the Substance Use Coordinator for Rappahannock Area Community Services Board and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm also a constituent in the Western Caroline District. So before I dive into what harm reduction actually is, um as it relates to opioids, I want to zoom out a little bit and draw attention to the fact that we already use harm reduction all across society in a lot of different ways. Sunscreen is harm reduction to protect ourselves from the sun rays instead of just staying inside forever. Bike helmets are a method of harm reduction to protect our children when they're riding bicycles. Speed limit is our harm reduction. Safety belts designated drivers, face masks during the pandemic. These are all harm reduction strategies that we already use. And so tonight, I just want you to keep that in mind as I'm talking about expanding harm reduction strategies as it relates to opioid use in our community. Um, when I was preparing for this, I looked at the Caroline Board of Supervisors website and I saw that something that was noted on there is that Caroline's priority is for all citizens to enjoy a protected quality of life. And I think that lines really, really well with harm reduction. So in the context of opioid use, harm reduction is a set of practical strategies and ideas aimed at reducing negative consequences associated with drug use. In short, harm reduction equals reduced harm. It is a set of strategies that meets people where they're at without leaving them there. Our goal is never to leave somebody where they're at in the present day, but sometimes we have to do that to move them forward. What it is not is encouraging our clients to use. It is not just telling them, you do you. It's not condoning risky or dangerous behaviors. And it never discourages or dismisses abstinence models of treatment where they expect full sobriety. I like the, oh, sorry. I like the image on the side that I added here. It says, I don't promote drug use. I don't promote car accidents either, but I still think seat belts are a good idea. So one question we get a lot is um policy support and political support. Um, there is bipartisan support for harm reduction. The Biden-Harrison administration has been very vocal about their support for harm reduction strategies and interventions to combat the opioid epidemic epidemic. Governor Youngkin also signed an executive order on Fentanyl Awareness Day on May ninth, um, sharing his plans and thoughts on combating the fentanyl crisis in Virginia, um, under his comprehensive plan. His call to action. So there is bipartisan support there. Um, and there is decades of research showing that harm reduction saves lives, is cost-effective in the long term. And people who receive harm reduction as an intervention before they're ready to stop using are more likely to actually enter treatment. Here's a list of the positive impact of harm reduction. Um, for those that are using, it reduces their experience of judgment and stigma. It also reduces their risk of disease transmission for bloodborne pathogens like HIV and hepatitis C. Um, it reduces their risk of overdose deaths, including accidental overdoses, which is something that is increasing in the pediatric population. So this is not just adults that are using opioids that are affected by this. Um, there have been numerous cases of children accidentally overdosing on either their parents' illicit drugs or their prescribed opioids that are in their homes. Um, there's reduced health complications resulting from IV drug use. And, you know, when we consider this conversation, we really have to consider the impact on first responders and law enforcement that are also involved in this crisis. And consistent feedback that I have gotten from local law enforcement and local judicial professionals is the, the burnout and the difficulty that they are experiencing by consistently having to go to tell somebody that their loved one has passed away from an overdose. And so these strategies can also reduce that for those people. Um, it has a cost benefit as well. There is reduced cost over time. And again, it increases people's likelihood of accessing treatment. This is a continuum of the full scope of harm reduction. We are not doing everything on this continuum, but this is what the full continuum looks like. And I'm gonna highlight in this next slide on what we are currently doing in this area. The state has passed Good Samaritan laws that went into effect um last summer. Um, people can no longer be charged for um calling EMS personnel to the scene of an overdose um, in efforts to try and boost those ED visits like Dr. O was mentioning. Looking for my notes. Um, we do educate clients on safer use to again reduce that disease transmission, reduce um infectious needles that may be in the community, um, reduce exposure for their children to maybe access their drugs as well. We provide medication-assisted recovery in this community. RACSB alone provides Suboxone and Bivitrol treatment, and there are also other providers in the community that provide those as well as um methadone. The care, the health department and RACSB provide no-cost naloxone distribution. And naloxone is also available at pharmacies in the area, and it was just recently approved to be purchased over the counter. And we also offer fentanyl test strips in our community. Here's a list of resources for people that are interested in learning more about harm reduction. And that's all we got.
Thank you. As soon as the lights come back on and we adjust.
Mr. Underwood. Yeah, good evening. Um, I didn't see any mention of, of mental health regarding issues uh as well that need to be addressed in terms of helping with this issue. Is that not an issue or problem or?
It definitely is. Over fifty percent of people with substance use disorder typically also have a co-occurring disorder as well, which is mental health. Um, our focus for tonight is more to focus on harm reduction strategies specifically with the substance use. But we absolutely address mental health as well when we are treating somebody with substance use. I don't believe you can separate the two.
Yeah, I don't either. That's why I was wondering why there was no mention of really using a two-pronged attack to address an issue when clearly for that person who has mental health issues, the single prong is not going to be effective for that person.
I absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think my, my, my reading of, of, of where we are right now is we're, we're, we're using only one prong, which is the mental health. And we're, we're trying to introduce the harm reduction as a, as an additional tool.
Okay.
Uh, an adjunct help with the mental health, which is about the only, well, yeah, the only tool we're using apart from policing or some other.
Thank you.
Mr. Sealy?
Couple things. Do the, and I'll, I'm, I'll ask you, you all. Have we provided test strips to the sheriff's office and to EMS providers to make sure that they arrive on a scene, they're actually able to test? Is that something the health departments do? And Sheriff Chief, do we have that, that available in the units that we have out in the field all the time? Since everybody's in one room, it makes it easy to.
You could have said yes or no, and we'll relay it.
But you have the ability to test if you get on scene and you see something.
He, he said, just for the recording, since he didn't come up, he said, we don't have the ability to test for a specific opioid. Okay.
The thing with Narcan is you can use it on somebody that is suspected, not gonna cause any harm to someone that is not. So, uh, you know, that's, that's the tool we use. That's our number one tool, other than identification and training. See what, what indicators maybe is happening. We don't have any way to test for it though.
The fentanyl test strips that we are handing out to clients are typically, so these are for people that are not in a place where they're ready to stop using. Um, and I want to emphasize that. These are people that are already using. Um, we offer it to them as a tool to be able to confirm whether or not the substance they're using has fentanyl in it. So that if it does have fentanyl in it, they can make a more informed decision on whether or not they're going to use and how much to reduce their risk of overdosing when they use, um, if that makes sense.
Well, that, that's a great clarification, because when I saw fentanyl strips, I was like, does the sheriff's office have them in their cars if they come across something? Do they test it before they're exposed to it? I guess is my primary concern at this point.
We do not have the test, we don't want the test.
Okay. Thank you. My other question is, we had an opioid settlement. We've, I think actually we voted to send that money to RACSB to be used. I'm sure you're aware. I think most of the counties in PD sixteen have done the same thing. And I'm gonna follow up on Mr. Underwood's question is, does that help with the, with the mental health component as well? Or is that just an opioid sort of program tool?
In the program that I manage at RACSB, I'm the manager for our um medication assisted recovery program. We strongly believe that you cannot address one without addressing the other because of what we know about co-occurring disorders. And so within our MAP program, our prescribing doctors also address any mental health conditions that need medications for them as well. And in the course of therapy, we are also addressing co-occurring disorders such as PTSD, depression, anxiety, and many others. Um, so we definitely address both in our medication assisted recovery program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I've just, uh, I want, um, as a teacher, one of the things is, uh, I wonder about, how do you guys get into the, is it a possibility for you guys to get into the schools? I mean, uh, an ounce of prevention sometimes is, uh, you know, I, I there's a, like in the schools, there's, I'm sure in every high school across America, that they struggle with, uh, the kids are vaping now. Um, we had an incident, I'm not gonna go into much detail, but at Spotsboro High School this year where one of the vapes was actually laced with fentanyl. Uh, and um, student was very lucky. Uh, I was just wondering, because I know like when students go to get their driver's licenses, because I know you had that slide about, you know, wearing a seatbelt, you know, I mean, a lot of people, uh, a lot of Americans, you know, die in car crashes every year and then we still drive and so we wear a seatbelt. But um, is there, I guess, is there a way to get into it? Because they have to go see that video on if you're not safe driving, this is what happens when kids speed, don't wear their seatbelts, text and drive. Is there something that you guys do into the schools and say, hey, look, because I, I think that would be, um, I think those videos with the those videos with the driving is, is, I find them to be very effective. Kids will talk about them, you know, and um, I know that they were graphic and so forth, but they, it, it kind of, it's a reality. Uh, and do you do the same for, uh, you know, for the, for the situation?
I'm so glad you asked that. Um, I actually prepared that as one of my possible questions. So as of March twenty twenty-three, all five school divisions within PD sixteen have adopted a naloxone policy to allow nurses to stock naloxone in their clinics. Um, there has been an increase in adolescents and young adults using opioids. And anecdotally, in our clinic, we have seen an increase in older teens smoking, um, what they call perk thirties, which is typically straight fentanyl. Um, some school divisions have allowed students to carry personal naloxone with a note from the parent. Our Prevention Services Department has been invited by some of the school divisions to train and dispense to students through specific classes. It's typically through the health classes.
Right.
Um, and there is no age requirement to be trained. Um, they just need parental permission. They have held events at, um, one of the Stafford High Schools for students and parents to come to as well.
Right. Okay, and, and, and I, I think that's all good. I'm just saying like as far as, as a student body, like what this, like, you know, like the statistics and so forth, what happens? I mean, I think that, that data point on Caroline is, it's, uh, it's telling and it's, it's numbers don't lie. Uh, I just think sometimes if the students actually see it and, you know, because some students, you know, they, once they start, when they go down that path, there's, it's, it's, it's a point of no return, so trying to get them, trying to prevent that from, you know, that first domino from falling. Uh, I just think that would be some sort of, I don't know if you put it in the health classes or, you know, because I do think the driver's ed piece for driving is very effective and uh driver safety, and I, I just think that would be something that would be it would be effective in the schools. I think the students would catch on, like this can happen to me. It, it has happened to, you know, certain students, uh, that, that had no, they had no idea that they were, you know.
He gives a prevention department, they do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Black.
We do have some handouts.
If you want to give them to Mr. Parton before you go, um, I, I just had a quick question or two, if, if I could. The fentanyl test strips, how are they distributed?
Um, so typically it would be a client coming in who's actively using.
Okay, you say a client, that's, that's somebody who's already been part of your system.
Yeah, somebody who's coming to us and we're meeting with them and they're in active use.
Not somebody that's off the street that says, I want a fentanyl. The reason I ask is I saw a documentary on, on, on TV about fentanyl being mixed with other drugs and people don't know, and of course they die. And the fifty-one people that, that I counted in the last four years from Caroline is a terrible waste, so.
Yeah.
Is there a way that they could be made available to any and everybody?
We, we do what we call a revive training. That's a Narcan training. And there, there's an hour-long training, but then there's rapid revive, where at the end of the training, you get one of these. And uh, which, which has the Narcan in it and a few other things and Eleni can ensure that. But uh, one of the, one of the options we have is also to uh have this sprout with uh fentanyl stripping.
Right.
And when we give it to clients, um, and sometimes there are people coming in off the street. They're coming to our front desk and they're saying, I'm using opiates. I need services. And um, to make sure that we're at least trying to keep them as safe as we can um, until we're able to get them started on medication or something like that, they'll meet with somebody to be given Narcan and fentanyl testing strips.
Do the rapid revive training.
Yeah.
And we'll give them the Narcan and the fentanyl strips.
Are, are those fentanyl test strips expensive?
They're not. They're less than a dollar a strip.
Less than a dollar a strip and one strip is one test and that's it?
Yes.
What, 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 the, the test strip that is expensive, which, uh, it's a Silasine, which is the, the the vet drug, and that's, that's the scary, really scary one, because it's, it's, it will knock out an elephant.
Yeah.
And now they're, they're cutting drugs with that as well.
Say that name again, because I, I'd never heard of that.
X Y L A Z I N E.
It is in this area. They're finding it in samples.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask is there, there are probably people who are using, who wouldn't necessarily come into your you know, place and say, I, I'm using, I want one. But if, if we could make those a little more widely available, then, then I think we might, if we could save one life or two lives, that'd be great.
Our um, uh, Narcan trainer, uh, he, he goes out, we will go to, to any, he was the one that did the training when the governor wasn't staffer. Uh, to the, to the uh high school students, but we, we go out to uh homeless shelters, to just anywhere. And we do the rapid revive training, give them uh the Narcan and offer them the uh test strips as well.
And part of why we're here tonight is to increase awareness in our community about these resources. Um, the fentanyl test strips are pretty new in this area. We've only just recently started distributing them in the last month. But we really do want to expand access to them so that people that are not ready to come into a clinic, even to
Yeah.
have that conversation, have something to stay alive. Because like you said, it's, it's not just being found in opioids. Pretty much every single drug right now is being found with fentanyl in it, including marijuana. Um, and so when we give it to them, we also give them an instruction sheet on how to use it. And um, we also give them Narcan, we give them this bag to carry with them. And um, we do have these as well available in all of our clinics. They're medication disposal kits that people can get through um Department of Health for free.
I, I, I recommend anybody taking care of a elderly person to have one of these. Uh, because, you know, even, even while they're alive, but usually when they pass, they have loads of opioids that usually end up on the streets. So if, if you have an, uh, older person that you're taking care of, uh, and they pass, please go through their medications and use one of these patches to, to destroy them.
Okay. The, the last thing, we have, Mr. Sadler, we have this presentation. So we're gonna put your presentation on the county website so people can see it. And, and last thing is, what do you want the county to do?
So, um, I would like you to look at that uh spectrum for harm reduction and figure out what And figure out what, what, what you have an appetite for. The, the spectrum, like, like Lenny said, you, you have, uh, Good Samaritan laws where, uh, the, the current law in Virginia is, if I see someone who's overdosing and we're, we're, we're using together and I call nine-one-one and I stay there, I will not get arrested, even though I'm doing something that's technically illegal. Uh, and then all the way to safe injection, inject it, where you can, uh, as a community, have a site where people can safely inject. Now, again, there's a, you know, there's a spectrum in between those two. And what we would like for the community is to ask more questions. Let's interact with you more to find out what you have an appetite for. And then let's work to, to get that and work on that.
Okay. Well, we're probably gonna have Mr. Partner, Mr. Cully be in touch with you again to follow up to see what we can do and to see if we can secure some of those fentanyl test strips to distribute to school, churches, wherever people may not normally go. Okay?
Do you guys, one more?
One more. Mr. Black or Mr. Sealy?
I do it. Um, do you guys ever, are you at the, um, like the agricultural fair or the, the state fair where there's huge gatherings of, um, people? Do you ever set up booths there to kind of educate people to, 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 to be out there in the public?
You, not usually to educate. We go there to do our environmental health inspections for all the, uh, uh, the, the, the.
Food vendors.
Food vendors. Uh, and we do some education, but, uh, mostly it's the environmental health stuff we do. But we, because we're already there to, to, uh, increase that capacity, it wouldn't be much of an effort for us.
I would have to check that with my higher-ups, but I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, I, I just, I just, because it's just a way for the public, I, I, you know, we'll put it on our websites and so forth, and I mean, those numbers are, are telling, but, you know, um.
State fair too.
State fair, yeah. Agricultural state fair. I mean, there, you have huge gathering. State fair people come from all over the state, all over different, different states, but, um.
And a banner, if you guys, I mean, I mean, maybe that's the ask to us, is to come out, come up with a banner that could be put up at different events. Because we have the Harvest Festival in Bowling Green, we have the County Fair, which is the twenty-first of June of this year. And the State Fair at the entry gate, e- entry gate, you know, a well-crafted banner, you know, four by four, four by eight, something along those lines as to what, just something that catches somebody's attention. Would just probably be advantageous. And those could go up at events in places where people could read them. It doesn't take a human resource, cause we all don't have that, that person that we can put out there for three or four or five days. But you could, you know, the ask may be to the different localities to invest in banners that would list, and, and I don't know what your critical points would be, but you could actually, you know, come to consensus amongst your organizations about what it should say. And actually put those up in places, because I think every locality would be willing to help.
I think the QR code is a great option.
QR code is a great option. The banners, I think, might help you because you don't all have people to put in places like that. And you can't go to everything. But if you put those up, I mean, that somebody with a QR code could walk up to their father's back and not worry about what anybody thinks or says.
Right, very discreet.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Phil, do you imagine training that you all offer? Can you just tell me what that involves and how people who might be interested can take that training, who it would be appropriate for?
So our agency offers, um, naloxone training, which is Narcan. They offer them virtually twice a month, and it takes about an hour to complete. At the end of the training, you will have a prescription for your own dose of Narcan to carry. Uh, we strongly believe that it is important for everybody to have Narcan, because just the other day, somebody was telling me, a client that had it was in a convenience store, and a child ran in saying that their mother had overdosed in the car. And they were able to Narcan this child's mother and save her life. Everybody should have Narcan. So the training is about an hour long. Or if you catch us at an event and get a rapid revive training, or you can also go to a pharmacy and ask this, but it's not always free at a pharmacy. The rapid revive training takes about ten to fifteen minutes. For people that are interested in hosting a training, we do have, um, you can email prevention@rapahannockareaCSB.org. And they could schedule with you to come do a training for the whole office. Um, and everybody is headed in. Our existing trainings are listed on our website.
So you could theoretically do that training, just like you're doing now?
Okay. All right, we may try to schedule that again, and then whoever's here, uh, would be able to see it, and I guess whoever registers online would be able to get the packet. Okay, that's another good way we could do things. Okay.
So far, so far this year, we've trained over fourteen hundred members in the community and dispensed twenty-seven hundred and eighty-six doses of Narcan.
Great. All right, thank you very much. It's, um, terrible position we're in, and we appreciate your efforts. And Dr. O will get together, give me another word or two, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is appointments. Rapping it, Rappahannock Area Community Services Board, um, Susan Gale is one of the three representatives we have, and her term expires, uh, June thirtieth. Mr. Parton, have you touched base with her to see if she can continue, or is she term limited out?
Chairman, she is eligible and willing to be reappointed.
Oh, excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Susan Gale to the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mrs. Long. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. The, uh, Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services, uh, Susan, I guess it's a good time to be Susan's. Susan Dietrich is our representative there. And, uh, she said she's willing to be reappointed.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Long, seconded by Mr. Sealy to reappoint Ms. Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Recreation Advisory Board, uh, staff is gonna work to determine who's willing to be reappointed. Would staff also check, um, not only who's gonna be reappointed, but who is actually attending the meetings? Because if you're not attending, you probably shouldn't be reappointed.
And could I ask if there's anyone out there listening from Port Royal District, if you are interested in participating in that committee, please contact me.
And you will bring that back at our June fourteenth is what it is? Thirteenth? At our June thirteenth meeting? So we'll bring those back. That moves us to the consent agenda. Any board member have any issue with any item on the consent agenda? Agenda item A has been removed, so we have B through H.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, I, I'll, I'll second Mr. Underwood.
So Underwood's making a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Sealy is making the second. All right, important things in here are the VDOT study of Drybridge Road. And electronic summonses for the sheriff. All those in favor of approving a consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries.
Do you wanna go to closed meeting and get that over with?
We have a couple of unfinished things.
None of which are fast.
Yeah. I can't do public hearings till seven-thirty. We have.
Wanna do nine and just, I mean, I don't have any questions.
Nine seems fairly easy. Nine is the proposed license agreement for space used by the Sydney King Arts Center and the Historical Society, and now the county. Is that Mr. Cully or Mr. Parton? I know it's a little early. We moved it up on you, sorry.
That's quite all right. I may have told the chairman of the Historical Society that it would be after the public comment period. She was gonna come and speak at the public comment period.
Okay.
In favor of it, so I, somebody's got her phone number. I can call and tell her not to drive here from.
Let's just do, let's just do close.
We, we can wait. Let's just go to close.
Yeah, we'll just wait. We'll do the, uh, we've got a closed session. That's fine. That's, that's fine. We'll just wait. And then if anybody shows up at seven-thirty to talk about those, that'll be fine, and we never seem to get out of closed session when we're supposed to, so. Mr. Sealy, I believe you've got a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I move that this board convenes in closed meeting pursuant to, to the consultation with legal counsel and litigation exemption section of two dot one dash three, seven, one, one dot A dot seven, and A dot eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and dis- discussion with staff regarding to potential condemnation of utility easements by the county, as well as updates on pending litigation involving the county where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the county's negotiating or litigation posture.
So seconded that motion?
Seconded.
Motion's made by Mr. Sealy to enter into closed meeting under the section stated, and seconded by Mr. Underwood. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion true carries unanimously. We will be in closed meeting and make every effort to be back at seven-thirty. Thank you.
We will reconvene, uh, coming out of closed meeting. We need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Underwood. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the board.
Mr. Underwood, do you certify? I so certify. Mrs. Long, do you certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
So certify.
Mr. Black?
I so certify.
And I so certify Mr. Forehand was not at the closed meeting.
Not present, thank you.
So he does not need to certify? So that takes care of our closed meeting. There was no action to take place out of the closed meeting. Mr. McKenzie will take care of whatever we discussed in closed meeting from here. That brings us to the public comment portion of the agenda. Public comments are the time when any citizen can speak to the board regarding any matter that was not a public hearing. Um, I believe the budget public hearing was two meetings ago, so there would be no public comment on the budget public hearing. But having said that, if there's anyone who would like to speak to the board about any matter that's not a public hearing, please do so now. Come to the podium, state your name and your voting district and your issue. Young lady, if you would like to step forward. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, good evening. I'm Kath McVeigh and I'm president of the Caroline Historical Society. I'm here tonight to express our appreciation for a space in the Sidney King Art Center. Uh, I'm talking in regard to the proposed lease on the agenda tonight. And I just wanted to let you know that we'll be happy to work with other nonprofit entities to provide a venue that will promote history and the culture of Caroline County. I did have a couple of concerns with the proposed lease. I expressed them, Mrs. Beard, but I'm sure those issues can be resolved. My main concern was the access to the building being restricted. There was a section in there that only provided a certain time slot for us. And I just wanted to let you know, our volunteers spend many hours in the society working on displays, inventorying, and processing artifact donations, providing access for geneticological research and board meetings. So as, as part of this security, we would be happy to provide a list of those individuals who needs badge access. Um, also there was concern about insurance. Uh, we do have a general liability insurance policy and I would be happy to provide that. I have added the county as an additional insurer. So again, I would be, be happy to provide that policy to you. And again, I just want to thank you for your support. We appreciate everything that the county has done for us and we would be proud to be part of this lease.
Thank you, Mrs. McVeigh. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board during board comments? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board during board comments?
My name is Josh Lannan Bowling Green. I'm a new resident in the district. And, uh, I submitted an application for a special exception in March sixteenth of two thousand thirteen. We have a planning commission meeting scheduled tomorrow. I, uh, am still learning the process and asked for a special exception or expedition to get a first hearing on this agenda today. Um, I can completely see now that the agenda is full. Uh, I apologize for any undue stress that it caused to the board and that was not my intention. So I'm looking forward to being able to present to the board after the planning commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board as part of public comments? Anyone else would like to speak to the board as part of public comments? Last chance, hearing none, public comments declared closed. We will now move to the public hearing portion of our agenda, which VDOT will come. Um, I don't see Mr. Bates. Is there somebody from VDOT? Mr. Hughes, you're not from VDOT.
He's playing VDOT tonight, I guess.
Uh, Rick is here tonight with us, so.
Are you with VDOT, Ricky? Why didn't you stand up when I said VDOT? You don't have to be ashamed. We like VDOT here. Mr. Hughes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So each year the board supervisors is asked to participate in the development of the six-year plan. Uh, the secondary six-year plan is the document that outlines planned spending for transportation projects, uh, in the county. Uh, the one thing about our six-year plan is, uh, we have two dedicated sources of funding. Uh, the telecom funds for our, uh, countywide allocations and then also the future unpaid road funds. Um, our current six-year plan, um, has so our current plan has, um, three projects in it, uh, two rural rustic, rural rustic projects and then one rural addition project. Uh, the rural rustic project is a farmer drive improvement for sixty-five thousand dollars, which is an improvement to about a hundred feet of road to, um, remove a Y intersection and making it a T intersection. Um, it's a project that should take about a week to complete and it should be started this summer. Um, the rattle trap, uh, road project is a current gravel road and the project is, uh, going to fix the ditches and add some surface treatment. Um, the money for that project becomes available on January one and we'll be ready for construction in, uh, next spring. And then down in, uh, Port Royal, we have the Caroline Street project, which is to bring a section of Caroline Street into the state secondary system. That money will also be appropriate on July one and should be available, um, that project should be available at any time. Um, so the countywide funds are allocated from statewide fees, um, collected for, um, telecom leases on Commonwealth property. And then our unpaid future road funds are funds that are allocated via formula based on our population and our, uh, number of unpaid roads in the county. Um, there's an agenda item on your later on, where we'll talk about a work session. Um, and hopefully during that work session, we can expand and put some projects, uh, on the six-year plan. But we'll also have to figure out a way to fund those because if you notice, there's very limited funding uh, through those two dedicated sources of funding, telecom and unpaid roads. So, um, that kind of concludes my presentation and Rick, uh, Mr. Ray. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Who's Ricky's last name?
Uh, Spurlock.
Spurlock?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Spurlock, did you want to add anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Question.
Questions, Ms. Long?
Yes, Mr. Hughes, you said the money was there for these three projects. So does that mean I don't have to pay attention to the twenty twenty five, the, the oh five, I can't remember.
It should be twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five.
Carolina addition that that can be done this year?
Yeah, that money will be allocated after July one. So whenever that money becomes allocated, Rick said it's a pretty small project. So it could be twenty twenty four.
We're twenty three. No. We're not in July yet, so we still got a little bit of that. Uh, okay, that's, that's good. That's just what I wanted to know, because there are some potholes that are gonna start, uh, throwing kids off bikes or, or breaking people's tires, uh, our front end alignment. So thank you very much for that information.
Mr. Hughes, with respect to the slide you've got up now, future unpaid funds?
Yes.
It says years, and then it says fifty-four thousand. Is that it's here now, or years away, or the sentence was incomplete?
No, so those funds are allocated out through twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. So there aren't any allocated right now, and Ricky, you want to explain how those allocations work? For those will be yeah.
Rick Spurlock, VDOT Fredericksburg residency. So what happens is those funds that would have been allocated in, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five are actually programmed to, uh, Rattletrap Road right now. And so those funds fully fund that project, uh, in the summer of twenty twenty-four. So all these other funds that you see are out-year funds that could be used for future projects.
But the la- the last line says future unpaid funds, years, and then it says fifty-four thousand. What, what, what does that mean?
That's just an accumulation of all the funds projected out through twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Spurlock or Mr. Hughes? No questions for Mr. Spurlock, Mr. Hughes? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will, uh, we will declare the public hearing for the VDOT six-year secondary system six-year improvement plan to be open. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the six-year plan? Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the VDOT six-year plan? Anyone? Public hearing is declared closed. How does the board wish to dispose of this matter? A motion to adopt would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adopt VDOT six-year plan.
Is there motions made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Seeley? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. You have a nice day. Agenda item number five is Sullivan Frederick and Kelly owner requesting a special exception, special use permitting, rural preservation. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is a request to repeal and replace special exception, SPEX zero four twenty nineteen. The property is located at thirty-two thirteen Lady Smith Road and identified as tax parcel fifty-a dash fifty-one. The SE contained, contained five acres of a seventeen-acre parcel. The conditions of the original SE, uh, were approved in twenty nineteen, and limited the number of events to thirty per year, and limited the hours of operation. The applicant is requesting the authority to hold one hundred and fifty events. In addition to an increase in the number of events, the applicant is requesting, uh, the allowance to hold events on Monday through Wednesday during the hours of nine AM to seven PM. SPEX oh four nineteen also had a prohibition on overnight parking, and the applicant is requesting that this condition be removed also. The facility has been open now for one and a half years. So this is a, uh, zoning map. This area property is identified in blue with the star in the middle. Uh, zoning of all the surrounding parcels there is, uh, RP. The red parcels there are zone, uh, commercial. As you can see there, it's near the intersection of Lady Smith and Jericho Road. This is an aerial photograph. Uh, the blue area represents the five acres that the applicant is using for the special exception of the total parcel. This slide represents the, uh, proximity of adjoining residential uses, um, and the distance to each. And as you can see there, I think the closest one there is, uh, three hundred and seventy-two feet. This is the applicant's generalized, excuse me, generalized development plan, uh, which shows in the red, the red squares represent existing buildings that are used as a part of, uh, the event facility. The green area represents, uh, an event field where they, uh, they host events and also have some food trucks parked there. The orange or peach colored areas represent parking areas, and then the blue areas represent, uh, the drain fills on the site. The inset, uh, in the GDP is the commercial entrance that, uh, has been installed. So the planning commission did recommend approval, uh, of the request with conditions that include the requested amendments related to the days and hours of operation, and the removing of the prohibition of overnight parking. The applicant had requested authority to host one hundred and fifty events for three events per year. The commission in their recommendation did not define specifically how many events, uh, that they were recommending. The applicant has requested one hundred and fifty, uh, events per year. Excuse me. The conditions in your packet recommend one hundred and twenty per, events per year, or two events per week. And so this concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and can answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr.
Any questions? Mrs. Long, you have a question?
Uh, due to a family relation, I'm going to abstain from this and go to discussion, go to the other room. I did not vote on this because of
You don't have to leave, you can stay.
I can stay, okay.
She's not gonna vote. You can stay. All right. Mr. Colly doesn't want you here. I want you here. Just let you know that I want you here. It's him that said you have to go. All right, that's really an extra conservative step. All right. Mr. Sadler, are we gonna have lights? Okay. All right, Mrs. Long has recused herself. She's going to abstain from voting due to a family tie. This project is actually in the Western Caroline District, so it wasn't even in our district. Mr. Underwood, did you have a question, or your mic was on? Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Anyone have questions of Mr. Hughes at this time before we o- open the public hearing?
I, I have one.
Mr. Black?
So the applicant asked for a hundred and fifty events. Where do we get down to one hundred and twenty? How did that, where did that, uh, I've had no complaints, I'm just kind of curious who came up with the one-twenty when the applicant asked for one-fifty?
Well, staff, I like the one-twenty was more conservative and would have less impact. Essentially, the hundred and fifty events is three events per week.
Yes.
Um, so that's where that number came from. When the commission did not provide a specific recommendation for a number, and I don't think that there had been any other, uh, S U Ps that have been granted that many events, so.
Okay, so when, I guess, all right, I guess I'm kind of confused. So when an applicant comes in and says, I mean, we can we can negotiate during the, during the whole time as far as how many we want, correct? So if I, we can go ahead and vote on the one-fifty what the applicant wants, correct?
Certainly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You have that option.
Yeah.
Mr. Forehand, you have any questions?
Um, Mr. Hughes? The, um, the statement and the revisions about, uh, a member of the applicant's family, that's pretty darn vague. Is that twice-removed cousin? How far out? Is it immediate family? Is it, uh, it's just a very loose term?
Mr. Ford, can we be a little more clear? I'm not exactly sure which statement you're referring to.
Say again?
I'm not exactly sure which statement you're referring to.
It's, it's
When it says, uh,
Number seven?
Yeah, it's number s- condition seven.
Special exception shall remain valid with the applicant or immediate family members own the property and operate the facility.
Sure.
And there was a, we would like to re- uh, to revise above condition to, uh, quote, "A special exception shall remain valid while the property is owned by the applicant or a member of the applicant's family."
Well, I, I would say the definition there for immediate family would be as the state code defines immediate family.
It doesn't say immediate fam- it just says family.
Says immediate in number seven, the original one we have.
And we're, we're, we're
And revision is family.
Correct.
I, I was talking to Mr. Seeley.
Oh, okay.
Kind of. So, Mr. Hughes, I, I note for family subdivisions in, in Caroline, we extended the definition of family to include nieces, nephews, aunts and uncles, I believe. It, would that be your understanding in this particular case?
That's how I would interpret it, yes.
So, Mr. Black, if there are any changes to, to make during the voting or discussion of this application, if you would make note to that, we would appreciate it?
Right, I, I mean, if you're gonna go, uh, I would just say immediate family, which
Well, the state defines immediate family as brothers and sisters, or sons and daughters.
Brothers, sisters, uh
Sons and daughters, yeah.
Sons and daughters. And stepchildren.
Yeah, but not aunts and uncles, and, and we understand in the country that there are quite a few people raised by their aunts and uncles, so that's why I wanted to extend it then. So you'll extend it to aunts and un- uncles when we have a vote?
That's fine.
That's your desire.
I don't, I think, I think they're okay with immediate.
I'd rather refuse immediate personally, but because it might just say, you might as well just say anybody, say nieces and nephews.
Right, right, I, I think they, I think they're okay with immediate family, so. They are, they are, the applicant's okay with immediate family.
All right, Mr. Hughes, thank you, sir. Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan, would you like to come and make a presentation of you don't have to, but you are the applicant, so we give you the first opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, we didn't have a prepared presentation, but one of the things in the conditions I noted, uh, today is that somewhere a double row of evergreen trees was added, and that was not a part of our initial conditions. I'm not sure if that's a typo, you know, as a result of a, a copy and paste type of event, but we have a single row of evergreen trees, and during the first, uh, time we were approved, it was discussed, and that double row was taken out. So I definitely that causes some pause, but the rest of it appears to be fine with me. Um, but, you know, our intent is for our children, that, that was the immediate family thing. Um, and then, you know, overnight parking was, it, just if we have a guest that doesn't feel well, goes home. We've had some, uh, times when elderly people end up riding home to someone else, and we just wanted to be able to have the opportunity to park their car. Um, and those were just some things that we had encountered, you know, over the last year and a half or so.
I do have a couple of questions, just whenever you're ready.
All right, did, did I, did I ever op- open the public hearing? Thank, thank you, Pam. I was looking for you to tell me. All right, that was a great presentation. I'm gonna ask you to do it one more time.
Sure.
Not really one more time, but officially, the public hearing is declared open, so you, as the applicant, have made statements. Anything else you would like to add to your statements?
So the only other thing is the hundred and fifty events, you know, do we think we'll have that many? Likely not, but thirty was definitely limiting. Um, and, you know, trying to host, we've, we've definitely turned away a lot of birthday parties, baby showers, and things like that, just because, you know, weddings are kind of our bread and butter. Well, we've had a number of requests to host different type of events, and we just haven't been able to do it due to the limitations on the number, and that's why we went with the one-fifty, so. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to have a seat in the front, and just in case there's any more questions for you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this public hearing? Anyone else? Public hearing is declared closed. Was that Mr. Black who had a question?
Yeah, I just have a, I have a few things that I'd like to go over, um, with the board, I guess. Uh, on number, and I guess Mr. Hughes as well, uh, on number two, he actually came, uh, Mr. Sullivan actually came back to us about the trees at some point, and we did tell him that he didn't need a double row, that he only needed a single row, so I don't know how the double row is, uh, still in there, because if you go back to board minutes, I don't know when, uh, Mr. Sullivan could probably be a better indicator of when, um, he came back in to, uh, to go over that, but, um, we did, we did change that at a subsequent board meeting, uh, to single row. Uh, the other thing is on number eight, and I guess this would be a board thing, we're moving towards, um, I know he, he is a, if you've been out there, uh, he's got a very, very nice facility, and I know we're starting to talk about, like, uh, people that can sell tickets at events. Um, and if he were to have a, uh, I just don't know, I mean, festivals, I understand, but no ticketed events shall be permitted. Um, you know, if he has, like, for example, a, um, I know he's had some concerts where, like, some baians come in and non-ticketed, uh, just to invite people in that are friends, but if he wanted to do something like that, uh, where he invites a musician in and sells whatever his capacity is, I don't know if the board would be amenable to that. Um, for him to sell tickets to an event like that, I don't even know if the applicant is interested in that. Um, but, uh, we had, I know we had talked about that. And then on number ten, uh, and eleven, the only thing I, the only thing I saw in those, how do you enforce that? I mean, if you have a delivery of food or tents and they're running late, or they need to, they have multiple events, I don't even know how, if a um, if someone shows up late and they did delivery of chairs or whatever, and they're, they're after how do we say, uh, you can't have the delivery because you're breaking the you know, if, if a company is legitimately late delivering something after those hours, are we supposed to say, hey, you can't you can't get the delivery because the delivery truck was late? So, um, I, I just think those conditions are I understand the, the reason behind it, but is that, is that an enforceable condition on our end?
It's, it's probably more of a consideration for neighbors and, and, uh, Mr. Hughes, have we had any complaints from neighbors?
We've not had any complaints. And, Mr. Black, you raised a valid point about enforcement. It is a difficult condition to enforce, but it is the guideline so that we, if someone ends up being a habitual offender, and it becomes a problem, then you have the ability to potentially call back the special exception. So it would be difficult to enforce.
And, 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 and let's go, let's go to the opposite. I'm just saying, like, and I understand, but so let's go to the opposite effect. Let's say someone's got a neighbor, because we've had them up here, right? So let's say someone has a neighbor that is not, like, just doesn't like that their fact that they're there. And they get a delivery truck at six outside the thing, and they, they call, there are gonna be the enforcement, they call the county. I mean, it could go the opposite way too, correct? Uh, I, I mean, I I just find it that it's, it's something that would be very, very difficult to us to enforce, and maybe it's not a big deal to the Sullivans, the, the nine and ten. I, I just, I just feel that's something that is where we're getting nitpicky on.
But you said, Mr. Hughes, is that it's a guideline or a standard, right?
Yeah, it's a standard. It's there so that there are some guidelines, so that you, you have some scope of control of when deliveries come in. I mean, you wouldn't this would be an anomaly, and I think the situation you raised would probably be an anomaly as well. It would probably happen once or twice. But if it, if it became a habitual problem,
Okay.
then there's the ability to, to speak.
Yeah, chairs showing up at five o'clock in the morning every day or whatever, then I think the neighbors would complain, and that would give you a chance to say, this is something you need to fix.
Okay.
Or there'll be repercussions.
Correct. When, when I, when I read it, and I actually had marked it in my, my book, is, you know, we don't if, if a tent company, and then sometimes I'll see these large tents open, you know, after an event for they go up two or three days before, and sometimes it might be up for two or three days after. This wouldn't permit that.
Right.
As it's written.
So, Mr. Forehand, can I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
So, jumping ahead to the next case, that applicant actually had that concern, and we amended that condition for that very reason. Because their business model operates with tents, and he raised that very concern that typically the tents may be delivered and not be able to be picked up within that timeframe. So in that case, we did address that concern. So that, that is a valid concern. I think the difference here is, is this applicant typically has a barn structure, so the, the tent is not their normal mode of operation there.
Yeah. And, and that, and the other, the other part of what went through my brain is, we don't we don't tell Amazon they can't deliver before nine or after five. And if somebody's delivering a cake, or they're picking up a bouncy house, things like that, I, I was gonna ask the applicant when it came back up, if this is handcuffing them, and I'm not saying you can start at five AM, but if, if we need to expand that an hour on each end to give the little more flexibility But if if we need to expand that an hour on each end to give the little more flexibility, then I'm open to that, if it's not an issue for them, then we can leave it like it is. That's fine, that that just, those were the thoughts that went through my head when, when I was reading it. Mister, Mister Chair, do you mind if we hear from Mr. Sullivan real quick?
I was gonna wait till we did all the questions and get them at once, is that all the questions?
Let's.
Yeah, okay.
I'm interested in the ticketing part.
Mister, Mister Sullivan, if you'd like to come back for a second. Um, just to, just to go over a couple of questions, we have the
Sure.
I I think we all agree on the family part, you know, immediate family, we'll extend it to aunts and uncles and nieces and nephews if you'd like. The, the other part was the double row of trees that Mr. Black mentioned, I believe when we actually vote, we can remove that as part of the conditions, that's something that you already had, was the single row, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Black, your question about the time of delivery for tents and cakes and chairs is, is that an issue?
So the time of delivery is a bit restrictive. Um, I can tell you that there have been times when we've had chairs delivered. And if they deliver them on a Friday, the day before an event, you have an event Saturday, there are not many chair companies that wanna come back Sunday, so you're, you're looking at a Monday pickup. Um, we don't have that very often, because we supplier, we supply all those things. But occasionally you'll have a a guest that will want a specific crossback chair or something like that. And, you know, we outsource that. Um, yes, so any expansion of that definitely helps. We don't typically use tents, we, you know, we do have the barn structure uh for for our events. Uh, we haven't had anyone, you know, request that we use a tent, but if you did, that would be limiting there as well. Uh, so, you know, any expansion there, you know, definitely allows us to, opportunity to kind of grow within the subset of conditions that that would be applied to us.
Sunday is in most places, except for church, considered a non-business day. So if we said after five PM on the next business day, that would work for you?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay. And then for seven, we're gonna, we're gonna add what immediate family, yeah. Uh, the ticketing part. Tell us about that.
I'd love to speak on that, uh, so we actually applied for a different permit to hold the uh, couple music festivals. Um, we had, uh, we we applied for, we applied for one permit, held on it, we had three events, we only held two of them. Um, and that way we could, you know, do the ticketed event, you know, thing, because under our conditions, we weren't allowed. Obviously, it would be great to be able to have a a barn dance where, you know, you were able to sell tickets, things like that. I had understood at one point, there may be s- an ordinance change or some text language change and you know, we had deferred about five times, you know, trying to wait for that. And it seems like that just wasn't coming to fruition, so i- if you're able to do that in this setting, that would be, that would be great um, to allow us to do that, I I remember the day when we applied for the permit for the other ticketed events. I think there was some discussion, you know, we just approved them for special events and things like that, why are they coming back for this? Uh, you know, which we didn't mind paying the additional, you know, permit fee, but it it is addition, an additional expense for a business and, you know, it seems to me that we would be allowed to do those types of things under this type of exception anyway.
Okay, question, Mr. Seeley?
I have a question for Mr. Hughes on the ticketed events. I know we have an ordinance in process, is that true?
That is correct.
How close are we?
So it is with the planning commission right now. Um, and that's an order that had started before I got here, so I haven't really been that involved with that process, but it is at the, the planning commission, it is coming forward, so.
Let me ask you, is it permissible for us to say we could approve it pending the planning commission's approval and we reev- because the application fees for all this isn't cheap. Is there a mechanism for us to retroactively? Because I have one right behind this, and I I had the same question, can we actually put that in this? And and?
I think that's a Mr. McKenzie question, and I I don't think you can do that.
Mr. McKenzie, can you give us some guidance?
Cause I'd, I'd be approving something based on some other thing that's not confirmed.
Can we give them a coupon?
I would waive whatever fees they have if they wanna come back, we can always do that.
Well, I think the way this is, correct me if I'm wrong with you, Hughes, but I think the way this is being postured through the planning commission to the board is um, a revision to the definition of special events facility. So we're adding language to the definition of special events facility that says, you know, the the, a certain number of ticketed events can be conducted at these types of facilities. So if you revise this language to, to not expressly prohibit it, because right now you can't do ticketed events as a special events facility. If if you approve that change to the language, then they are, and and if you were to approve this amendment, even if you weren't, they have, they have a valid SPX right now, then the definition of special events facility is going to change when, when, if you approve that amendment, allowing a certain number of ticketed events, so as long as there's no conflict in their existing conditions, does that make sense?
Yeah, exactly.
No, 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 it doesn't, because the 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 actual purpose as stated in our packet is.
You're right.
You would have to.
Well, we're saying, we're, we're modifying the approved special exception.
That's, that's the issue, is this is, this is, they're repealing and replacing, this is a whole new, your, your, the proposal here is we're gonna replace the the conditions that exist now with these ones. Right now, I think that condition number uh eight would be in conflict with the amended definition that came through. And I think this would control, because you've got a specific condition, so if you want to say, we wanna make them subject to whatever the definition is, whether it gets changed or not, then you would need to change eight to just make it, to basically remove that, that, that reference, that second sentence, because right now, that's, I guess, let me say it another way. Right now, the statement, no festivals or ticketed events shall be permitted, it's almost kind of surplusage, because the definition of special events facility right now says no ticketed events. But you're considering changing that, which is, I think, what Mr. Black was referencing, so.
But but to, but to clarify though, their, their special event permitting allows no ticketed events, if we remove that particular condition, when the special event ticketing ordinance comes up, do they automatically fall into it? But they're grandfathered.
They're, well, they, they would, they would be grandfathered, but I think that they would be capable of that, of of operating under the expanded definition, because they're special events facility, so I don't think we'd have, I don't think they'd have to
Come back and.
They don't, they don't have to operate under the old definition, they they can, they can operate under the new definition, I think all special events facilities are gonna be you know, are, you know, non-conforming uses, is what you're thinking about, it occurs when you're doing something and we change the ordinance and you wanna continue doing it even though we've now made it illegal.
Right, and this is just the reverse, exactly.
We, we're making the ordinance more expansive, so I think everybody who has an approved special events facility is gonna be able to avail themselves of that more expansive definition.
Miss, that, would, wouldn't the conditions separate from the ordinance trump?
Yes, sir.
Any ordinance change?
Yes, sir, which is why this would need to be changed.
Correct, if we, we could just make eight, eight go away entirely.
Or or just, um, yeah, I mean, or or just
Just delete the second sentence. Delete the second sentence, and then, and then when that ordinance does change, then, because this, this statement is in every other one. So they would all have to come back to us to get that last second sentence struck, in order for them to have a ticketed event, so we would have basically, there would be a gate for any other special events facility to do ticketed events.
Why do they have to come back?
Yeah, but we change the ordinance.
See, that's what we're just saying, they, they, they would automatically be subject to the new regulations.
Unless, unless it's in a condition that is specific to their facility.
Right, we're gonna strike that condition.
No, no, I'm talking about the other ones.
Right.
They would all have to come back.
Right, if they had that same condition.
If they desired to have a ticketed, ticketed venue and this condition, correct.
Which would be a lot of wave.
It would be a case by case for all the others, because it's in their conditions already, so there, there are some that are small that we probably wouldn't allow ticketed events, so you'd wanna be able to say a s- a certain size.
But I'm, I'm just looking at one, where we have, we, we stopped a ticketed event from occurring at a, at a venue because of the very same language.
Correct, and we're getting right, and and.
And and.
But it's not before us yet.
Right, but but, so, but let's say Mr. Parton has a special events place that says no ticketed events on his special exception.
Which they all do.
Which probably most of them do depending on the size. So, once we change the ordinance, which has nothing to do with the special exception.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
When we change the ordinance,
Correct, okay.
Mr. Parton's special event facility would then have to come back and say, can you remove this condition from my thing?
That's what I'm just, I was gonna make sure we're on, on the same page there.
That, I think we all understand that.
One thing now, and
Right.
But they all have to come back.
Correct, he just happens to be, this particular special exception
That's correct.
Happens to be here while we're making this decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And.
And striking that sentence, there's still not, doesn't immediately allow them to do it, because the definition is, still is what it is.
Correct, correct.
Is that?
And then when Mr. Parton comes back, we'll waive his fee when he comes back for his special event facility, just to change the ticketing thing. Probably. Probably.
Don't make that promise.
I said probably. That's Mr. Parton, alright. Alright, well, good, um, any other questions for Mr. Hughes or for Mr. McKenzie, the county attorney?
Other, I have just one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hughes, how long do you think it will take for you to come back to us with the language for ticketed events?
He didn't, he said he didn't know.
Yeah, it can't be, it can't be that difficult, I would think.
Say, August, I would hope.
What's that?
August. August.
Okay, cause Mr. Sullivan may wanna have an event that's ticketed between, as soon as possible, I would think, so if it's, if it's something that we could do expediently, then I think we would like to see a little speed behind that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled in July, so is there a slim chance you can get this to us in June?
No.
No?
Well, I guess we'll just.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
I, I just, I can't recall if it's, if it's scheduled for public hearing, planning commission, yet.
Yeah, if it's not.
Yeah, we're not getting there.
They might wanna do a tour.
Yeah, they're never gonna make it if that's the case, okay. Alright, we will, um, I I guess we'll address that when the time comes. Hope, hopefully there's no, uh, okay.
One other on, on tents.
Last question, go ahead.
Last question. Mr. Hughes, and and I'm real familiar with tents, I've rented lots of them for big events, um and the, the, the deal with tents, and and I, and I will, I will say that this is a, I like your word, this is a guideline. Because tent companies have a will of their own, if it rains on, let's say, the Sunday after you have an event Saturday, it rains Sunday, it rains Monday, they're not coming to get that tent till Wednesday or Thursday, cause they're gonna take it to the next event wet and set it up there so that, cause they don't wanna store a wet tent. So there are gonna be cases, and and I've suffered with this, they brought a tent two days early to my event because it had rained, and they weren't storing the tent wet, they said, you know, they give you the week that it's coming and it it showed up on Wednesday for Saturday, it wasn't supposed to show up till Thursday or Friday. So, I I guess what I'm just saying is, I don't know that anybody with, with an event has any control over tents. Tables and chairs may be one thing, but tents are just a wild card if it's wet, and they bring them, so I guess if you get a complaint, you get a complaint, but I I'm just saying that I've been there before and and suffered the same thing.
And and I think staff will take into account any extenuating circumstances when they look at enforcement or violations of this.
I I just trying to make the applicants feel better about tents, if something comes early or stays longer and nobody's running down there to go, you've got a tent, cause they're way out of your control. The only thing I will say is any tent over a certain size needs to be inspected. And I highly recommend you make sure that the, you get a permit for the tent, it's not expensive, I've gotten several, and they get inspected, cause these tent companies are in a hurry, they set up a tent as quick as they can with the minimum amount. And I had to have a tent company come back and add stakes and poles, so just a data point, there is a requirement for a permit for ten over certain size.
Alrighty, how does the board wish to dispose of this, Mr. Black, with the conditions you'd like to modify?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead, and I may need some help with that, to approve SPX uh, zero two, two thousand twenty-two with a hundred and fifty events, not a hundred and twenty as the applicant asked for. Uh, with number two, we take out the double row of evergreen, because we'd already agreed on that, so that shouldn't even be in there. Uh, we strike, oh, it's the second sentence of number eight, condition number eight. Um, and then on number ten and eleven, I know, Mr. Seeley, I don't know how we go about, um.
Number ten, we said next business day, removal of next business day?
Yeah.
And then there are extenuating circumstances.
Can we just expand that to seventy-two hours?
Seventy-two hours.
That's fine.
Seventy, so number ten, uh, yes, number ten, shall be seventy-two hours.
Do you, do you want me to read those back to the board?
And then what was the other one?
If you would like.
Is that eleven? Oh, and then eleven, I'm sorry, in eleven, we were gonna expand the hours. Mr. Sullivan, did you wanna add anything? Misses? No? Can you agree with all these conditions that we've put forward?
To thank each of you for looking at those, uh, some were pretty restrictive early on, and that's why we've come back. Uh, and it not just, you know, helps us, but I know there's other events venue that are doing this. Yeah, they're all, anytime you have restricted, cause I didn't necessarily look at these as a guide. I looked at them as a strict condition that we will meet all the time, and uh.
It's a condition that gets reviewed, so it's by, kinda by exception, so it's best to look at it with some teeth.
Right, and uh, so, you know, we, when we see them here, that's how we view them, that we're gonna meet these. Yeah, and uh, our, our biggest thing is making sure that our neighbors in the local community, you know, is is pleased with what we're doing. Yep, yep, so thank you very much.
Don't, don't, don't thank us yet, we're not done. The last thing is, it's gets three-year review. Alrighty, Mr. Black, you've heard the conditions uh repeated, I think the board all agrees with the conditions. We are ready for you.
Um, this, uh, I'll go ahead and move that we accept uh SPX zero two, two thousand twenty-two with the um, modified conditions.
Second.
Okay, the motion's made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Seeley to approve special exception zero two, twenty twenty-two, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. And you're welcome now.
This is long to come back, brother.
Nancy, you can come back. Um.
Number six.
I can't, I can't just skip to ten? Y'all wanna do the other ones, okay. Thought I had a chance there. Agenda number six, special exception zero one, twenty-two-three. R A D A for Robert and Ada Carruthers. Uh. For not properties, their special exception, Mister Hughes.
Thank you, Mister Chair, members of the board. As you know, this is a special exception request for a special events facility at eighteen, two oh four Sparta Road. On the south side of Sparta Road, approximately two tenths of a mile from its intersection with Route three oh one. Uh, the property, um, special exception area is nine point seven five acres. Located in the bounds of a four hundred and sixty-eight acre parcel. The inclusion of the access road, uh, to the special events area is included, bringing the total to, uh, fourteen point seven five acres. The comp plan identifies this area as suitable, uh, for agricultural preservation and this use is consistent with the, the comp plan. So this is the, an aerial of the, or map of the zoning, uh, the subject parcel there, the nine acres is there in the middle with the star. Access is from, uh. Sparta Road there to the north. This is an arrow of the photograph, you can see the predominant farming fields around the, uh, nine acre piece where the special exception events will occur. This represents the proximity of the, uh, adjacent residential units, and you can see the closest there is nine hundred and thirty-three feet, uh, from the edges of parcels. Um, these measurements were taken from the edge of the parcel, from the parcel boundaries because, uh, this applicant does propose to use tents in their operations, so. A tent could easily be in, in a number of locations on their property. This was the applicant submission for the GDP, uh, there again identifying the, the nine point seven five acre parcel. And also in red is the access road, uh, to the parcel which crosses, um. A, a separate parcel which is included, like I said, making it a fourteen acre total area. This is the, an image of, uh, the site, this is looking directly at the, uh, the facility from where the road splits, looking back towards, uh, the house. This is an image looking back towards Sparta Road from where the driveway splits, and as you can see, uh, it's a significant difference and there is a significant amount of, uh, mature trees. Um, along this driveway, so there's a lot of, you, you can't see this facility, um, at all from anywhere off of Sparta Road. The planning commission did recommend approval with conditions, uh, there were twenty conditions and I highlighted a couple of them. Uh, limits on the hours of operation, um, maximum events of thirty per year. Um. And. Maximum guests is two hundred and fifty, and onsite sewage disposal system approved by the V D H within five years or with the construction of a structure. Used to conduct special events. And the whole of this special event is responsible for ensuring that all required permits have been attained, so essentially what that means is that whoever they. Lease the facility to, they need to make sure that they have obtained the necessarily, necessary permits, whether that be A B C or have, uh, contracted with a licensed sewage handler. Um, these conditions are a little different than what were, uh, recommended by the planning commission. Um, after the planning commission meeting, staff got together with the applicant and had a conversation. Cause it was, uh, some concern by the applicant about the conditions and we got together and agreed to, uh, these conditions. Lot of conversation in the last hearing about the seventy-two hours for removal of the event, so if you'll notice in these conditions, there is that provision that. Gives them seventy-two hours to remove, uh, any tent facilities that they, uh, that their clients duly wreck on their property. Uh, again, there's a limitation on the maximum of guests and. That concludes my presentation and the applicant is here as well and can certainly answer any questions if you have any, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mister Hughes, questions for Mister Hughes?
Mister Hughes, would you go back to the map that shows the houses? Maybe it was the property line, I just wanted.
It's a property line.
Where it showed the footage from the houses, was there one that said two eight, two hundred and eighty feet down at the bottom or was that a different one? So, the closest house is two hundred and eighty feet. From the property line?
Hang on, that's actually on their property, I believe.
That's on their property, that's just what I wanted to clarify, but I don't have the picture by book, so.
Mister Hughes, I, I wanna commend you on the, on excellent presentation you, you've made on these last two and showing us sightlines and distances.
Thank you.
Can you include those in the packet next time?
Sure.
Thank you. Two eighty at the bottom, you see?
Yeah, is that on their property or?
Yeah, they own, they own everything around them, and so that, that structure is on their property.
Alright, very good, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
I have one question.
Mister Forehand, question for Mister Hughes.
Mister Hughes, is the, is the, the access completely on the applicant's property?
It, well, if, if you look at this picture, it's a really good image of it, so the nine point seven five acre area that they're gonna use, you see the parcel boundary there? Did you just have a point?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with the two hundred and fifty guests, how they get there.
So they use this access road, it's on property they own, yes.
Right, so it's entirely on their property, okay, okay.
Yep, it is.
No other questions for Mister Hughes? Alright, I'm gonna get it right this time, thank you, Mister Hughes, we will declare the public hearing to be open for special exception zero one, twenty-two-three. Mister or Mrs. Carruthers, would you like to speak as the applicant?
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna do this.
Good evening, uh, my name is Robert Carruthers, I'm a full-time farmer, resident of the county. Um. We reside in Mattupanah District. Uh, we live on Inland, this other farm that my wife and I purchased, uh, about two years ago. Is across the road, which is in Jeff's district, in Bowling Green, Mulberry, uh, it's a four hundred and sixty-eight acre farm. We actively farm it, we're looking to add a wedding venue to maybe add some extra income. Uh, you have the packets in front of you, so I'm not gonna waste time reading all that. I do have a, um, an issue with the ticket, the ticketed events. I don't have any. Ticketed events lined up. But I would like that lifted, uh, if possible. And, um.
So you wanna see the same thing we did for the last applicant? And that's, I've written, let me go through my questions.
Ticketed was there, yeah.
Yeah, we're, I'm looking at the exact same thing, so if you guys will give us a minute.
Let him finish.
Okay. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Sarah, we're gonna, we're gonna go through with the public hearing.
Okay.
Mrs. Carruthers, you wanna add anything?
Um, she, she's pointing at me, so she, I think she does.
Oh, the only thing I, you know, we, we don't have anything scheduled at this point, um, and I don't know how many events we'll have, but. I see thirty as maybe being restrictive as the quantity. Um, and if there's any way to just change that now, that would be great, I don't think that'll happen in a while, but. You know, just don't wanna have to waste anybody's time to come back.
Okay, we will address that when we go through the conditions. Thank you both. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else would like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else? Hearing none, the public hearing is declared closed. Board members at this time have questions for the applicant. No questions, Mister Sealy?
Yeah, I'd like to, since we, we made some significant changes in the last one. I'd like to also see immediate family and condition four. Cause it's Robbie and Ada Carruthers, they have a son and a daughter. The son and daughter both actively participate. Um, I'd just like to strike the no festivals or ticketed, event shall be permitted. And.
Okay, go slower, cause number four is Robert and Ada Carruthers. And family members?
And immediate family.
And immediate family as defined in the subdivision, in the family subdivision ordinance.
Correct.
And number five, we would take out?
Second sentence again.
Second sentence, is, um, Mister Hughes taking notes or, or am I taking notes?
I, I've got notes as well.
Mister McKenzie's taking notes, okay. So you got four and, uh, four and five?
And then, I, we seem to be in one chord with the one fifty events, I don't know. Let me just say this, I did an event there, I've done two or three events at Mulberry Place before they owned it. I, I did the tent. I, I've never had less than two hundred and fifty guests there, just because of what you could, we did a mounted hunt there, it was really spectacular. And when you do that, the participants of the, of the mounted hunt was probably fifty people. And you can't even see a car in the picture when you're taking pictures there because of the, the way that. Way that's laid out, where you can park and, and the way that's, um, that land allows you to be, there's a lot of very flat. And the topology is really good. I, I know we're at two fifty, I doubt they'll go over that, but if they do, I, I, and this is a question for Mister Hughes. If they had an event with four hundred people, one time. And, and I'm going on speculation, cause I know how many folks I had there. Wh- wh- what are the, what are the bound, I, I'm just looking for how zoning and planning, cause nobody can see this place from anywhere. I, I just kinda ask the question.
It's an impossible enforcement, I mean, there's absolutely no way for us to enforce, how many people are gonna be on this property, they could have a thousand people. On this property on one afternoon, and by the time someone called and told us the event would be over and the violation would be corrected, so. And we don't have staff working on weekends to go out and police or count cars or anything like that.
Right, right. I just, I, I just know what happened to me.
Let's, let's.
Before we disclose too much.
Yeah, let's not tell all our secrets.
We should understand that. This board is ultimately the enforcement mechanism for any special exception. So if there's, if there's continuous issues, if we see pictures and there's obviously a thousand people there. And this keeps happening, then it comes back to us under the scheduled reviews.
Right.
And we take action.
I'm just trying to get the rules out, that's all I'm trying to do.
I'm just, I'm just, we're all, we're all on the same page.
Mister Forehand has explained it exactly as it works.
Would anybody mind if I bump this to three hundred?
I think three hundred is fine.
I'll, I'm gonna bump that to three hundred. And. I, I think those. Robbie and Ada, is that sort of cover the waterfront for what you heard, saw and were thinking?
And when we strike ticketed events from the conditions, when the ordinance gets done, Mister Hughes, they automatically have the option of using ticketed events.
I was gonna go to a hundred and fifty, just like they did, like the last one.
Start, start off, yeah, they starting up.
Yeah.
Uh, starting out Berry Street.
Okay, sixty events, we'll double them.
And, and give them a one-year renewal or one-year review? And then if you come back in a year, no violations, you can go up higher? And there's no cost to do that? Well, it's gotta be passed first, but.
Right, right, right. But okay, one-year renewal and we can look at the number of events then.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify one point on the ticketed piece. Um, and obviously this is gonna be subject to your discretion, but right now the language that's working its way through the planning commission. There's a cap on the number of ticketed events that can occur in special events facility.
It's like four.
Uh, yeah, something like that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, I think we all were aware that, cause we sent it to planning.
But, but we always have the option to change.
Change that.
Up from. Once it goes, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Once they pass, we can do what we, so we'll, so.
Right, fine.
And then we don't have to worry about that until we get that one, so continue with your motion.
So, I, I'll make a motion to accept.
Approve.
Or approve, um, special exception oh one. Twenty-two-three for Rad LLC owner, Fort Not Properties LLC owner. For a special events facility. Do I need anything else?
With the changes in the conditions?
Oh, with the, with the changes discussed in the discussion.
You wanna try to repeat them one more time?
And I can do condition four, changing to immediate family, condition five, striking the second sentence. Maximum number, condition fourteen goes to sixty and the maximum number of people is to three hundred. And I guess we're gonna change, can we change the delivery times to match? What we did before? Are those in here? Those aren't even in here.
Yeah, you can do that, that's fine.
And change the delivery times from eight to six.
Alright, and then.
And I would suggest Mister Sealy, the review time be more than a year, cause it's gonna take them time to get.
No, we want them to come back in years so they can increase the number of events.
Right now, it's, it's, uh, three years.
Three years.
So, one-year review?
Three-year renewal.
Three-year renewal. Okay, that, that'll work, cause they may not have, but wanted to.
They're probably, within a year, they're gonna figure out how well the business goes and then figure out from there how many events you wanna have.
Okay, so, so number six is gonna be revised to this, should be reviewed in one year. Uh, from the date of approval and, um, renewed three years from the date of approval.
Correct.
We're striking what?
Site.
Correct. Cause it's gonna be events. I think that's the right word, isn't it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, I'll second the motion. Did you finish it?
I, I think I finished it.
Alright, the motion has been made by Mister Sealy, seconded by Mister Underwood. Uh, for the approval of special exception zero one, twenty-two-three. Any discussion on the motion, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
I do have one, one thing, I'm sorry.
Mister Forehand has discussion?
I don't see a sound, anything, is, am I, am I missing it?
It said it had to be pointed inward from the property.
I know, but there's.
No decibel limit, is that what you?
Oh, correct, we have a, a typical. Uh, I think there was one on the last one, county ordinance is following county ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gotta follow the county.
Okay, alright.
Noise ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries unanimously, and one other thing, Mrs. Carruthers? The county won the Vatty Grant? So internet will be coming to your house. And this place too. Just so people know, Mrs. Carruthers has been threatening me for quite some time to get internet, so. You'll, you'll get it though, the hope is there, though. Thank you, folks, um, so that's approved. Agenda item number seven is unfinished business. Further discussion, the county administrator's budget. Mister Cully has provided, I believe on everybody's desk. A list of the changes that we have been talking about. Mister Cully, if you will, uh, allow me to go through? And then you can ask the questions. I'm gonna pick the easy ones first. We have in the, does everybody have that list?
Yes, I don't have. He, Mister.
You have another one?
No, he's, Mister Parton's got one.
Oh, Mister Parton's got, we're good.
Okay. Alright, Mister Cully, you wanna go through it then?
The one you have should have Thurman, Brisbane in there. Oh, where'd it might go, sorry. Trying to look at the computer and talking, the mic was to the side. Thurman Brisbane was added to the one, should be the one that was put out at your place, the one Mister Parton had was printed prior to Mister Thomas, uh, sending that to me.
It's on mine.
Correct, that's the one Pam put out, so that should have been a copy at everybody's desk, so the proposed, uh, general fund total. Uh, I'm trying to make Excel big enough to read, um.
That's good to me.
Prior, uh, sixty-four million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand and fifty-six dollars. Um, it's been mentioned to me, and I can't remember which board member, add fifty thousand dollars back into the school C I P for staff computers, that, that was taken out.
That was me.
And so, you put, put that fifty in.
That's staff computers.
Staff computers, that, that had been funded previously, but I ran out of, uh, uh, C D F funds to fund that with, so I took it out. Uh, fifty thousand to Caroline's Promise for teacher, school supplies, there's been talk amongst several board members for that, so that, that would be fifty added to, not. Fifty total, so that's fifty to the thirty-three thousand, some odd Caroline's Promise already getting.
Thirty-five or something like that.
And then add, uh, you, you asked me to meet with the. And then add uh you you asked me to meet with Mrs. Carter from ten-seven Farms Youth Programs for her summer camp. She's gonna have. Uh four different locations spread out through the county, running a two-week camp for about twenty kids per camp um. Uh I recommend five thousand dollars for that and we're gonna write a letter of support for that as well, so she can also go seek other grant. Grant funds. Uh and then Mister Thomas asked for ten thousand to add to the thirty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars that's uh or thirty, yeah, thirty-three ninety-nine. Uh for Thurman Brisbane. Brisbane.
Stop there for a second. Mister Black, you had a question from GWRC?
Yeah, uh 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 GWRC on the Thurman Brisbane thing and we got a we got a email from Pastor Tillepa. The the GWRC is completely pretty much struck funding from Thurman Brisbane. It's all going to the Continuum of Care, which is Micah Ministries. And I'm not saying anything bad against Micah Ministries because they serve a purpose, but um. All the money now is going to one and so, I mean, the Micah Ministries model is if someone's homeless. They get help, which which is fine, but there's also people that are getting help from Thurman Brisbane that are um criminals. And I mean, not Thurman Brisbane, but from the Micah Ministries. And if 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 someone, the Thurman Brisbane model is. A model where you have to be drug tested and you can't have a criminal record. So if a if a lady and her family, I'm just thinking, you know. Wants to go to a shelter. I'm I'm just thinking homeless shelter. Like I I I don't really want her next to. And I I it bothers me that at the GWRC, we've cut funding and that's something that we're gonna talk about at GWRC. We're gonna dig uh down into. Because why why aren't they eligible for federal funding anymore? Uh and so since Thurman Brisbane is not getting uh the uh and we can see from Pastor Tillepa's email. We only covered like three percent of the bed stays in the whole uh the whole uh Planning District sixteen. I was even thinking if we just made it an even fifty, which is what um because we're we have way more. Uh you know, bed stays than even like uh King George by far.
We have more usage than the amount of money we're putting in.
We have more usage and they're I know their funding from GWRC is going down. So I was wondering if we could make it instead of being thirty-one fifty and I know Mister Thomas had said forty-one fifty, if we could just make it an even fifty. Because uh you know, i- if someone. From Caroline goes in and and they they wanna be in a situation where they need a homeless shelter to go to that's safe. I think Thurman Brisbane is the one that offers that.
So are you saying make make that nineteen thousand instead of ten? We give them thirty-one now?
No, we give them three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
We give them how much?
Three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. It's right there on the screen.
I got, all right, I got, okay.
It's uh you don't have anything on your sheet. It's it's in the letter.
I saw, all right, I yeah, my. Yeah, right, right.
Mrs. Hall is coming your way with the 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 right copy, but it's on the screen.
So this is a three three-time increase.
Oh, wow, we only provide thirty-one. I was thinking we'd provide, all right.
The whole a holograph of you didn't get the right one.
We need to fix GWRC because we've been run over there. In Planning District sixteen, we've been run over. And I'll just leave it at that. Just so everybody knows.
Right now, we come back and look at it and we.
Mister, can we make it? Can we make it an even twenty-five then? Twenty-five K?
No, it's that would that's fifteen more.
Right.
We give three thousand.
Right.
That's what you're saying. We give three. I I've got the email, but.
That's what's in the budget. I looked. I I looked when I put it in this chart. That's what what's budgeted. We that's an increase of six percent. Or so, so that's that's the twenty-four increase, so we were given less than that.
All right, well, can we say, uh I can count real fast, so can can we say we'll we'll do the ten thousand and we'll look at them again? In six months, three months, whatever timeframe is fine.
I wouldn't uh, yeah, I I'd preface that. That's fine. I would preface that with having them come here too.
And that would be good too. We all got the uh notice from Reverend Tillepa, so I think we're all aware, but ten ten thousands is. Three times what we've been giving.
Correct, it's a big increase.
We should give more, but that's 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 good for now.
All right, so those are the the increases.
Those are the easy ones.
Proposed the proposed transfer to the School Operations Fund, it was uh recommended was sixteen million, one hundred fourteen. Thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. That's a five percent increase over the the current FY twenty-three. The schools asked us the other night for additional five. To do five percent for everybody with the state money and the money that we already put in, they would need fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. They also asked for an additional transfer to cover their uh step one of their pay plan study, which was zero to sixteen on their. Teacher salary scale and the cost of that's five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. So that would take the new. Transfer to School Operations Fund to sixteen million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and ten cents. That's an increase of five hundred seventy-eight uh dollars and nine nine hundred, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. That would take the total general fund from proposed to sixty-four million, eight seventy-seven, nine hundred and eighty-four. Dollars, which is six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine twenty-eight with the things we added at the top, along with the things we've added with the schools. Now, if you look at what that does, which is where that all gets paid from, is the transfer from the fund balance proposed, two million. Thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. If you transfer from the fund balance with the fifty-fifty split that we talked about the other night. That's two million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-four out of the fund balance or four hundred and twelve thousand. Nine hundred and seventy-two dollars more than what's proposed right now. If you transfer a hundred percent of the step, which means they get a hundred percent of the step in twenty-three. And uh spend the state money all in twenty-three, then the transfer from the fund balance jumps up to two million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty. Increase in six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So that's the two models. They don't affect the budget for twenty-four other. Then what does the transfer look like on the revenue side? So the expenditure budget goes up. No matter what. It's whether you have half of that revenue that's in. For the uh new students, which I got a little chart down here. So they have additional revenue, five hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve. Uh dollars for ninety-three point two students, which somebody did ask me, so I put that in at six thousand. Twenty-nine dollars and ten cent for ninety-three point two students, so somewhere around uh that for uh us per student. If you took fifty percent of that revenue and put it in twenty-three, that would be two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred fifty-six would go in. Appropriate into the twenty-three budget. They could do half of that increase in twenty-three. Um which they had said the other night was uh averaged around fifteen hundred dollars. And then the other half would go in to the fund balance. Transfer, lowering our transfer as I showed you there um to two million, four hundred forty-eight thousand, because we'd use the same two eighty. That rolls over uh at the end of the year and not have to take it totally from the fund balance. So that's the only change between it. They. They end up with the same for twenty-four. They just end up with a half of it in twenty-three and the whole. Change to their scale, the other half of it in twenty-four. Any questions?
Well, just to clarify, your understanding and our understanding to make sure. In in based on what was hap- what happened in our Monday meeting with the school board. There would be like a fifteen hundred dollar bonus paid out in June to all the teachers.
Not a bonus. They would change their contract.
Right.
Change their contract.
For for June, July, whenever it is to in the June thirty fiscal year. And then when July one starts, that second part of the payment for those teachers would be spread on their twenty-four contract.
Along with five percent, along with five percent.
Right.
So they would get five percent on their current salary, even their amended salary with the extra fifteen hundred. So. With the new July one budget, which they may not get till August because their pays are different. They would then, their new salary would jump up all the way to what they're proposing, along with five percent. Just be split. Their ask is to do it all in twenty-three. And then in twenty-four, it would only be the five percent raise for everybody. This would all be taken care of in twenty-three. What that does cost is all of that money to be spent in the county, they'd have to find another two hundred and eighty thousand. Nine fifty-six from the fund balance. So it's just a fund balance thing. Do you wanna spend? Potentially two million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, four forty to do what they've asked for? Do you wanna spend two million, four hundred and forty-four? Forty-four. To do what was asked, we split it. So it's just those two things. As we we're approaching, you know, three million out of the fund balance versus right around the original two million uh. Five something that we were before we started finding additional revenue.
Mister.
But but either way, in twenty twenty-four, there's gonna be a three thousand dollar difference in zero through sixteen.
On average, they said it was on average, along with five percent, along with five percent.
I think it was three thousand was at the lower end and then like fifteen hundred was like at the upper end of the sixteen, so I don't think it was an average or. I don't think it was an average of three thousand. I think three thousand was for the lower end and then like upper end was probably fifteen hundred. Is that not? There's only nine hundred, okay. So the average would be fifteen hundred somewhere in there, fifteen, some somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, it was three thousand.
Yeah, three thousand.
Three thousand, now split over two years, yeah.
Right, 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 okay. Uh one other thing, um and Doctor Kilbaric, maybe you can answer this. If no matter what, whatever we do, the split or the hole. For the teachers this year, it goes to everyone, no matter if they're not coming back? So if let's say that the teacher already knows that they have uh they're clocked out and they're going to. Spaltzylvania, Stafford, and this is their last year, would that would it would it would that include every single teacher or just the teachers coming back?
We are focused on year zero to sixteen, and if we are to do a retroactive payment, we would speak with our attorney, but. My guess would be that it would need to be everyone serving in that capacity during this fiscal cycle. Which was similar to when a bonus was paid out at the end of the school year. It went to all for their service of this previous year.
Okay, all right, so. Can I make a motion? I'm I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. I'd like to make the motion that we increase the budget and give it what the schools had asked for. Um give them one hundred percent of what they had asked for rather than do the fifty-fifty split. It's just a matter of, I mean, it's it's one or the other. Not necessary. I I appreciate Mister Sealy's compromise after thinking about it. I was like, if this was for a capital cost or something, I I would understand and. It's really more about uh. I guess how we view things in perception more than anything else and um I think through this budget process. For me, just a couple of things, uh a budget is is it's it's a, I I said the other night, it's a list of your priorities. And um I think we have done a very good job with our public safety um and Sheriff Moser. Uh and the fire department, we're adding nineteen firefighters. Uh we are doing that, but I would like to make the motion that um we actually. Put the schools first in this budget. I think that would do that. And so I move that we give the full one hundred percent of the uh of what the schools had wanted.
That, can I add some clarity to that?
Yes.
That would be a motion to appropriate the five sixty-three.
Five sixty-three, yes.
Into the FY twenty-three.
Yes.
Doesn't have anything to do with twenty-four.
Right.
Now, now before we, okay. Right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Okay. Before we vote on the motion, let's just clarify, Mister Cully, you were saying again.
That 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 is that hundred percent going somewhere is what happens in twenty-three.
Right.
Um the the twenty-four budget is an expense item, and so you put that up there in twenty-four. The five sixty-three and the fifteen nine oh seven. That's a twenty-four issue. If you make the motion to give a hundred percent in twenty-three and appropriate to twenty-three, then I all I'm showing you here. Is that the budget's not gonna have that revenue and it's gonna, the transfer number's gonna be two million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, four forty when you adopt. The budget for twenty-four.
That's that's what I'm call- that's what my motion states. And there's a second, correct?
Yes, and and we're still discussing. Where we we were Monday night, when we talked about the June tax collection. That that we would see four hundred thousand possibly of additional revenue. Three something, whatever.
Something, because the personal property was six hundred thousand, six six something and you're not gonna get a hundred percent of that.
Yeah, ninety-seven point two, I think, is what Miss Smith told me and. Yeah, so that that's gonna be revenue that's actually. Real that that will go into the fund balance. Will it? So that two point seven will still be the number you're saying pull out of the fund balance.
I'm saying would still have to come out. I mean, th- that would be the bat. The fund balance number is a balance number. That balances our expenditures to our revenue. I don't have revenues of two point seven million. To balance what we're proposing.
Cover our expenditures. So the fact that we're gonna get another three hundred thousand to go into the unencumbered balance.
Yeah, that's just.
That doesn't count.
Yeah, that just happens over. That's behind the scene.
Okay.
I was counting on that all along.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? This long?
So, put this simply, Charlie, could you please tell me uh the difference it's going to cost in our. Overall budget, just by. Not delaying for a second payment and splitting it.
Two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. More out of the fund balance potentially to cover that.
And it's two hundred and all we're talking is, all we're talking is a difference of a couple of months of getting the two payments out. Correct?
No, the salary would not adjust on the twenty-three, so they would write a new amended contract and pay people. A new salary. At the low end, she had said three thousand more dollars. If we de- delay that and only give them half the money, then everybody, if somebody was gonna get a thousand, they would get five hundred. If they were gonna get. Three thousand, they'd get fifteen hundred. If they were gonna get fifteen hundred, they'd get seven fifty. And then they would get the remainder of that, along with the five percent increase on their overall salary. In the next fiscal year, which would be in. July, August, whatever, but they would their new salary would ultimately be where it is. It would just. The two hundred and eighty thousand coming out lowers what they would be able to pay people in twenty-three. An adjustment, additional adjustment in their contract in twenty-three. Doesn't have anything to do with twenty-four. All it has to do with twenty-four is.
So for the last two paychecks, because they they work on a ten-month schedule, correct?
Ah, you have to hide and don't answer any of that.
They're they're paid uh they're paid ten-month contract, but they're paid over uh twelve months.
Divide it up and do different, I guess, so they can do insurance and all the things that have to come out, so yes.
So they would get, they would have a, I I don't think you guys have been paid for May yet, right? No, so May would be May, June and July, and then the next fiscal year starts, I think, uh August, the August paycheck starts the. Starts with the next school year.
The new year.
Yeah.
Right. But the new contract would be the same.
They would still get the money. It would just be broken up into three payments and with their, their old contract.
They wouldn't get the same amount of money. They would be minus. That half in twenty-three. They would ultimately get all of it in twenty-four, but instead of getting all of it in twenty-three, they get half. So every, if somebody was under the schools, if somebody was gonna get three thousand or they were gonna get a thousand or. They would get half in twenty-three. So they would be missing that. It would never come back because we're using that two hundred and eighty to pay them next year in twenty-four. So they're not whole. I'm not saying that they're whole. Everybody would get half what the schools propose for them. In twenty-three. All of it in twenty-four. How we pay for it in twenty-four is that we would have that two eighty. That wouldn't come out of the general fund balance. It would come out of money we know is coming back from their school budget. So I'm not saying they're equal. They would be less in twenty-three, half of that amount that they would have gotten under the schools proposal. They would be completely whole in twenty-four.
Plus the five percent.
Plus five percent.
And and we have no idea how many people are not coming back to the school system.
Yeah, they're gonna have to pay it if they do it because they already, they're amending contracts. They would have to amend everybody, is what I'm saying.
No, no, it's it's a valid point because if 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 half the if half the staff is not coming back. They would be getting all of that bonus right away.
All of that pay increase would go in.
All of that pay increase, right.
Would do is it would divide up that in your your salary would go up for that amount and it would be split over a couple of checks that they've got left. May, June and July. So three checks, it was three thousand dollars, it'd be a thousand dollars in three checks minus taxes.
All right, does everybody understand the motion and the and the result? Okay, we've had discussion um. Mister Forehand, how how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mister Black?
Aye.
Mister Sealy?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Nay.
Mister Underwood?
Nay.
Three votes nay, the motion wouldn't carry either way. Is there another motion?
Mister Chairman, I I would like to adopt Mister the the proposition of the fifty percent revenue. This year for the twenty-three amendment and then the remainder of that in the twenty-four. Budget cycle with the remainder of the additional. with the remainder of the additional ADM money and then the addition of like two eighty-one from the county.
I'll second the motion. Discussion on this motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I, I really, I'm thinking of our fund balance. We have to continue this, not just for the second year, but thereon, and we need to look at the upcoming steps. So we need to keep our fund balance healthy also. And I think that little bit of difference is gonna help us and also help the teachers by splitting it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna do this. Uh, I was hoping that I wouldn't have to vote no on a budget twelve, two years in a row, but I'm, I am gonna vote no. I, I, I just think it's, and I understand what Mr. Seeley did, I, I really do. Uh, but I, I just don't think it's, it shows a priority. And, uh, so I, I, you know, I mean, we can go back to that dollar and argue that dollar all day long. Um, but at some point, we're gonna have to sit down as a county. And I know we have dividend demographics in our, but, um, my, my constituents and, you know, they want good schools and they want teachers that are paid well. And I think that's how, that's the only way we can show them. The only responsibility that we have is transferring mon- money over. We can't run the schools, the schools do that. The only priority we can do is with our, with our pay, with our checkbook. And I think we're, we're taking a small step. I'm not saying we're not doing something, because I do think we are doing something, but I, I think that we can definitely do more. And hopefully in years to come that we will continue to make them, or at some point make them a huge number one priority. So that's my comments, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us?
Mr. John. Um, Forehand? My, my preference would have been for the whole, whole amount. Um, I am happy that we actually have, um, I, I believe we have the votes to, to go five percent plus adding that step for next year. Um, just a point of clarity, we're, we're adding about one point one million to the school's operations budget from last year to this year, or from this year to next year. So I am.
One thirty.
Yes, more than, more than that.
One point three. Um, so that, that is not an insignificant amount. I mean, I would like for it to be a little bit higher and I voted for that. But I will vote for this moving forward because, um, forward is where we gotta go, so. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Forehand, how do you vote on the motion before us?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Nay.
Mr. Seeley?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
And I'll vote either motion's gonna carry, uh, five to one. Now, that's just the motion for the school contribution. Do you need a motion for the entire budget, Mr. Colley?
That was the motion for the whole budget.
And that's the way I took it. What I would want is clarity that you're gonna appropriate two hundred and eighty-one thousand to the FY twenty-three school budget for the, uh, uh, step one of the, you know, part of the step one, uh, pay plan.
I mean, it was in my motion, but I'll make the motion for the two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
What do you say, Mr. McKenzie? You saying yes?
Did you say it was in the first one? Was it clear? I'll write it up that way. If everybody's clear, I'll write up, you know, we'll write up one.
Well, I, I knew it was two eighty-one.
It is. That was half of the, half of that, wow. So that, I took the motion as adopt, adoption of the budget with these numbers that were on this sheet with the only difference being you're making appropriation to the twenty-three budget for half of what they asked for in twenty-three, two eighty-one.
Correct, and that means?
Oh, I did have a quick question. You have questions? Well, in addition to the two eighty-one, we're talking about the fifteen nine oh seven to complete out the five percent, correct?
That's in twenty-four.
That's in twenty.
All of twenty-four is straight.
Twenty-four, okay.
The only thing that changes in twenty-four is whether you're taking six ninety-three out of the fund balance or four twelve and using the other two eighty from the leftover line.
Just to make sure that was in there, that, that's all, thank you.
But the two eighty-one, I mean, I, I know I, if we had to go back to the recording, you'll see I said two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
If you'd like to clarify by making another motion, that'd be fine.
But what I wanted, my intent was to take the two hundred and eighty-one thousand that is half of their ADM this year.
Correct.
Their ADM funds that's coming in at five sixty-one.
Appropriate that to twenty-three.
To twenty-three. And the remainder appropria-, we will hold that appropriation till twenty-four for the other half so that we have that for the twenty-four budget in addition to the revenue we have to.
I think that's what the board understands.
We understand.
They're appropriating two eighty-one of it.
We want the full ADM amount appropriated to us this evening. And when it remains at the end of the fiscal year, we will return it to you just as we do any other funding that is available. That is the most appropriate route to take.
We, nope.
By holding that money back, you are ultimately not affording us the opportunity to use state funds that are appropriated to us because we have ninety-plus students coming into our student body, membership. The expectation is you appropriate the full ADM amount to us. And if our school board agrees to provide half of that back to you to fund this plan that you have developed Monday evening and approved this evening, we will then return, just as we do at the end of the year on June thirty, all of those funds to you. We did not discuss the withholding of that ADM money on Monday evening and it would be inappropriate for that to occur without conversation with the school board. Our vice chair is here, if you'd like to have him come forward.
Okay.
I thought that was.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick.
That was part of our discussion.
No, it wasn't.
It was.
I don't believe we.
We did.
We haven't had an appropriation vote on the five sixty-one yet. Have we?
I just, in my motion, took care of the, that appropriation because we talked about.
We haven't had a presentation on the five sixty-one yet, correct?
Mr. Colley, I thought.
This went over all of it.
No, I, I understand you went over all of that, but, but where did we say the five sixty-one that comes to the county to be re-appropriated to the schools? Where did we get that particular line item, other than Mr. Seeley mentioning it and us assuming it?
Bottom of the page.
Do we know?
They gave us, they gave us that number the other night. Yeah, the additional, it's right here, additional five, twenty-three ADM state revenue, ninety-three point two students, right off of their chart, we worked off of the other night. And that's what we suggested.
That's, that's the money that they were gonna use.
To fully fund it in twenty-three.
Right.
And then we talked about Monday night splitting that over the two years. That all came up Monday night, we talked about it. I mean, I don't, whatever way you wanna do it is fine. I'm, all I explained to you is what that difference means.
It, it was dis-, it was discussed that it would go and then come back.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if it's six of one, half of the other.
We have to appropriate that money one way or the other for them to spend it. It's just revenue right now, their expense.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we have to actually have.
We have to, we have to appropriate some amount of that money back to them.
We have to have a separate appropriation motion for that, is all I'm saying.
That's what I was asking for, for the clarity of twenty-three.
That's, that's all I'm saying. And that's what I asked Mr. Seeley, what he was doing. Okay, Mr. Black, you have another question?
But if it's state money, you're just talking about state money now, right? The five, the five seventy-three, why would we hold back any state money that they're getting? Why, I mean, I guess I don't understand, why would we hold back any state money that they're getting?
So we discussed, the, the ADM money comes back to the schools as state money, the five sixty-one. We talked about dividing that and at the end of the year, part of that would come back. Be, wait a minute, hear me out. The, half of that, the fif-, that was the fifty-fifty argument, discussion. Fifty percent of that would be used in twenty-three and given to the, um, awarded to teachers as part of their contract for twenty-three. The other half, the two eighty-one, plus the two eighty, two ninety-six that we put in, the five percent will be part of the twenty-four budget appropriation. So that way, the, the, oh, because actually at the end of the year, as, as was discussed, any money left over is not state money, it comes back to the board. It just comes back to the general fund.
Right.
To the county, so it's, it's not state or local, it's just money.
But I, it was my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, that the local appropriation, right, was gonna either be half and half or whole.
No, you're wrong, no. No, it was always the state, look on the chart, five sixty-one, it's, see.
We don't have any local appropriation to twenty-three.
Right, we've already made our appropriation for twenty-three. It was, it was all from the state that she, that came back with the ninety-three point, ninety-three point. The reality is. ADM increase, yeah. The reality is, we can make the appropriation for the entire five sixty-one, which is what Dr. Calverick just said, with the understanding that we expect two hundred and eighty of that to come back as being unspent. Is that the understanding you have? You just say yes or no?
The five sixty-one nine twelve would be appropriated to schools as state funding. At the end of the year, we will return all funds that remain to the county as we have in the past. The board determines how those monies are spent. It would be inappropriate for me to speak on behalf of the school board. But if you have conversation with them and there is consensus on this plan, then by all means, we would accommodate administratively returning that amount to you for this purpose. But on Monday evening, there was not a collaborative consensus, there was discussion and dialogue. So it would be premature for me to speak on their behalf.
Okay, so, so then we don't need to, we just made the motion and we approved the motion. We didn't, we don't have, we have a choice to go back and do nothing or do, make another motion. Mr. McKenzie? As a clarification, in such cases where there's additional ADM funding provided by the state, that funding comes to the local governing body, which is us, for reappropriation to the school. As that reappropriation, based on Mr. Seeley's motion, is it valid to appropriate half of that money June thirtieth and the other half July first? Or does it have to be all appropriated at one time?
I can't answer that off the top of my head and I, I would have to, I can't, I can't confidently answer that off the top of my head. Yeah.
I mean, it's, I just, I mean, in reality, school year's over. Yeah. If the state really wanted to make an impact in twenty-three, they would have given it to us six months ago. I mean, just to be clear.
But we all, we all understand that, alright.
But it was calculated to the thirty-first.
Alright, we're. I feel bad for her.
I think we need to have you decide on that. We have a motion ahead of time. We have another meeting in June. We will let you clarify that to make sure we're doing something correct.
Okay.
We, we have appropriated, based on, on the motion that, that came before the board, that was voted on, at least half of that money already. When you clarify it for us in June or via email in the next couple of days, we will be able to determine whether we need to appropriate the rest of that money in our, at our June meeting, which would still be this fiscal year, or at our July meeting, which would be the new fiscal year. That'll also give staff time to work with, uh, the school board staff and figure out where consensus is on what their understanding of how the money would be spent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't see the advantage, and this is kinda like the transportation discussion we had a couple of months ago. I mean, I understand the point. It's just an accounting thing, we, we can appropriate it now. And.
Okay.
We have the expectation, just like we have the expectation that it's all going to the zero to sixteen. We've, we've talked about that at, at nauseam. And if, if we get back one twenty, then the conversation, next budget cycle's different.
I don't, I don't have a problem either way. How does the re- Okay. When I'm doing that, you made a motion, we passed, we passed the motion, if it's, if it's incorrect, then we'll correct it. But right now, the motion has been, been properly. I thought Mike was a fairly good compromise where we all had. If you'd like to make a.
You can, you can make a.
Yes, you did.
We do have a specific motion on the floor and I realize we, we need to act on that one before we can.
No, it's already, that, that one passed.
We have, we have, we have, we have passed that motion.
You passed the motion.
Mr. Seeley's motion in adopting the budget was the two eighty-one, which was half of the.
ADM.
ADM money. Mr. Black, I think, is getting ready to make another motion to appropriate the other two eighty-one in this fiscal year. Is that what you were doing?
I was getting ready, but I think it, I was on the losing side, so it wouldn't have to be come from, uh.
This is not a, this is not a reconsideration.
Okay.
This is a brand new motion on the other two eighty-one.
I would like to make, I would like to move that we appropriate the other two eighty-one to the schools for this fiscal year.
At this particular time?
Yes.
I'd still want you to follow up and figure out what we do in June.
We will clarify.
Is there a, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Nay.
Nay.
Alright, Mr. Forehand, how do you vote? Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Seeley?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Point of clarification, so we're holding the two eighty-one.
Right.
And this, this is a motion to appropriate the second half at this time?
Right.
Alright. And that, it would be held hopefully by the school to go into the second payment eventually.
They want it all up front now. They want all the money now.
We would give, we would give the schools the other half of their five sixty-one, which is two eighty-one, two eighty, nine, nine twelve or whatever. And, and then it goes into the school's pot in a month and a half, or a month and a week. The year ends, the school will return whatever money they have left over, if there is any money left over. And, and that would go back to the second part of the.
They're not gonna have any.
We'll go back to the budget again. I would like a clarification from legal, but I don't think with contract negotiations going on that I wanna keep two cans down the road. So, um.
No, we could give it to them and. There'll be a different discussion.
But I am going to put myself out on them because I hear opposite feelings coming from both sides, so I'm gonna get in the middle. I am going to disagree with, um, um, the, uh, school right now and that this was not discussed because it was. And I thought we all had a pretty good feeling, we were gonna get this done, be it all in one motion or if we were gonna divide it up in two. And I felt very confident talking to a couple of the, uh, board members, but that, that was doable. That would be fair to the teachers and fair to us budget-wise this way, late the budget season. Therefore, I am going to trust that the school realizes that I am trusting them to put up the money that they offered. We have this extra money, we can put this toward getting our teachers where we need. We're free to do this because we've got extra students coming in and I will vote for this. But please, let, we gain ground at that last meeting. We do not wanna lose it, so I will vote for it.
Mr. Underwood?
I vote nay.
I'm gonna vote aye, so it passes forty-two. The second motion is give the second two eighty to the schools now. Um, so they get the whole five sixty-one. Our, our understanding was we were, the plan was half. But the school board determines how the money is spent that we give them. No, this motion, this motion passes now.
Fashion, we're, we're good.
I still would, I still would like the legal review though.
Anyway, we're gonna adopt a budget with the two seven, two nine, four four, zero out of the fund balance.
Right.
Rest of the budget goes the same.
Right.
That's fine, I'm fine.
And what we will do at the end of the year is determine what's returned.
That won't affect the budget.
No.
The budget number that'll be.
Your budget number's two, two point seven now.
Goes to.
Right.
Standard and poor and everybody else will be.
But what it will affect is.
Out of the fund balance and that, that whatever happens after that's.
What it will, what it will affect is when we come into budget season the next year to continue.
Anyway.
It will not be the twenty-four, this will be this, the.
It will not be the twenty-four, this will be this, the, the budget we're getting ready to approve is what it's gonna affect. If that money's not there, it's gonna affect us. It's gonna push us to almost three million dollars out of the unencumbered balance. I don't know what anybody's thinking, but we can't afford to lose three million dollars in the unencumbered balance at this point in time.
No, that, that makes an assumption that that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is not coming back.
If they give bonuses and they spend it to zero, we don't get it back.
Then the conversation is very, very, very different next year.
No, we're done. The budget's done by the time.
No, no, no. Gentlemen, 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 I think, uh, lady and gentleman, I think we've discussed it. We've made a decision, right or wrong, that's our decision, we're gonna move forward. Um, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is, Mr. Hughes, is that you? Carmel Church Station. Are you ready to come now, or you want us to take a break? Don't take it out on him.
Please. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, so we're bringing forward this continued first reading of the proposed amendment to the conference of planned, uh, chapter eight land use in the land use map for the Carmel Church community planning area. The amendment to chapter eight readopts, uh, related language to the urban development areas, uh, designation, UDA's, uh, Carmel Church Station, and adds language for the establishment and designation of areas for planned innovation, research, and technology parks. This change in designation would allow, uh, zoning amendments or rezonings to be consistent with the future land use map, and do not have to request comp plan amendments as they come forward, as they may, as these requests will be approved by the board, the rezonings. It should also be noted that although there is an application in the rezoning process, this amendment for the, uh, created the PERT district and the UDA is not intended to serve a single application. So the, the land use map amendment redesignates the boundaries of the Carmel Church Station UDA and identifies two development areas for innovation, research, and technology uses. The northeast portion of the growth area reflecting development potential around the MCD and west along Jericho Road, Route six fifty-eight, to the vicinity of, of Hewlett Road, and supportive economic development initiatives at the Mount Airy property. There is a total acreage of the identified PERT areas, uh, designation of four thousand thirty-five. And so if you see the map I have on the screen, that total area encompasses the area in red, which would be the expansion, uh, west along Jericho Road. And then the east side is the one thousand four hundred and fifty-four acres, um, to the west there, which encompasses the MCD area. And then in the middle, you see where it says UDA, there are nine hundred ninety-three acres, uh, in that area. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at the March twenty-third meeting and forwarded the amendments to the board with the recommendation of approval with the exclusion of the western boundary of the, the, uh, PERT area. And did, but did include the eastern boundary, uh, of the fourteen, one thousand four hundred and fifty-four acre area. The board has a couple of options.
Which one are you saying is the western part, versus the eastern part, the, the one fourteen, ten acres, or?
I'm sorry.
The part on, uh, Jericho Road?
Yeah. Forgive me, I, I, I think I misspoke. So the western part is everything, um, west out Jericho Road, which is in, outlined in the red area. The Planning Commission forwarded its recommendation excluding that area.
But did include the other areas on Jericho Road west of Route one?
No, but didn't include the area.
You're saying the orange part? This is Route one, that's Jericho Road, right there.
Yes.
That's already commercial off.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So the board has several options, wants to approve the amendments as originally advertised, approve the amendments as forwarded by the Planning Commission, modify the amendments forwarded by the Planning Commission, deny the amendments in their entirety, or refer the amendments back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. So without the changes, the board has one hundred and fifty days to act from the date of referral by the commission. So as I noted, the to- total expansion of the PERT areas is four thousand thirty-five acres. So that concludes my presentation and.
Alright, so you, you have us, uh, you have a question? Go right ahead.
The UDA area that we have outlined currently, as we're moving forward in, into commercial and industrial, can that be, is there anything holding us to a UDA or making that stay a UDA in the future?
No.
So there's no state requirement or anything that we have a UDA in Caroline? Cuz I, I'm, as I'm looking at this, housing's becoming less and less attractive to a lot of organizations, and they're looking more and more, and that's right on the I ninety-five corridor.
Yeah, that, that designation of the UDA goes back to the original Carmel Church Station approval, and that designation as a UDA, uh, speaks to the comp plan expiring to certain development goals of more neo-traditional, for lack of a better word at this point, um, development. So more of like what you see in Ladysmith Village, that type of development. Higher densities for single-family, uh, detached, multifamily densities will be increased. So that was the purpose of the UDA areas. It's a purely optional designation. Um, at one point, the Commonwealth did require, um.
Right, I thought there was.
Restrictions to adopt, but they have made it optional at this point.
So we could chip away at that as commercial, or in i- i- as we go further in this, we're actually looking at designation as planned research and technology development areas, and that could actually overrun that.
Just because the Planning Commission turned it down doesn't mean you can't.
Right. But I'm just talking, I'm, I'm just talking about the actual UDA area, I'm not talking, moving out of that area. I'm talking about actually the nine hundred ninety-three acres that's currently there.
Is that the Carmel School? Or is that the parcel right next to the Carmel School?
I believe that represents the Carmel School.
You think the Carmel School is green?
I think that's what that is, yes, sir.
Is that the landowner that wraps around the Carmel School?
Uh, Luck, and some, I, I know Luck is interested or has some property holdings in there, yes.
Yeah, they own all that around there.
Yes. We have talked to Luck, yes.
Alright, so, so. Any other, any other questions for, for Mr. Hughes at this time? Cuz our decision here is to continue the first reading, or have this go to public hearing, and the reality is, the, the Board of Supervisors has the ability to include areas that the Planning Commission did not include, if that's the board's will at that time.
I, I think that, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, if there's no more discussion, I make that motion that we.
Go to public hearing?
Go to public hearing, and give the board the opportunity to include additional area if we so decide.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alright, motion's made by Mr. .
Mr. Chairman, before you.
Yes, sir.
Adopt that motion, can you clarify, so you want to move forward to public hearing as it was presented with the areas that in, west of?
As with, with the areas that, that are to the west, so the board can make a decision of whether to include or not include that.
Right.
So we're not going with the Planning Commission's recommendation?
No.
We're going to take the whole thing.
Yeah.
For dis- discussion, and then maybe take the Planning Commission's recommendation, or maybe expand the Planning Commission's recommendation. They have the technical expertise to see what's there. They may or may not have exposure to all the things Board of Supervisors members have been exposed to, so it's best to keep it as general as possible, and then we could always whittle it down.
Okay.
I believe that's, the western part is, uh, Mr. Underwood's district.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's the motion, that's the second, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That motion carries unanimously, so we'll go to public hearing, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Agenda item number nine is the license agreement for the county space used by Sidney King Arts Center, and I wanna make sure everybody understands, come on, Mr. Parton, that it is actually county space used by the Sidney King Arts Center, it's not the Sidney King Arts Center. It's county space.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parton?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, as you know, the county has had in place for several years an agreement that allows the, uh, Historical Society, the Carolina Historical Society, and the Sidney King uh, Arts Foundation, um, to display exhibits in the wing of the, the old Commissioner of the Revenues wing of the historic courthouse that faces Main Street. And the agreement has recently expired, uh, which gives us an opportunity to, to update it and, uh, and to clarify the allocation of space, uh, particularly in light of the fact that there have been other organizations that have, uh, have since requested, uh, to use some of the space. So we ask, uh, the County Attorney Chris, uh, McKenzie to draft a new agreement, and he recommended the agreement take the form of a, uh, display space license agreement rather than a lease. Uh, I'm gonna mention some of the key provisions, uh, in the agreement, summarize them, and if, if Chris has any that I, I missed, he can mention them, but uh, what it does is formally, uh, designate certain portions of the building, uh, to the, I'm gonna use CHS, the abbreviation, and, and S E K, uh, Foundation, and it leaves the remainder of the building under the, the county's exclusive control. And that will enable us to utilize the space for other select exhibitors. And, um, we would envision that the, the period would be for three months, um, up to three months, but the county has the ability to shorten or lengthen that period of time at its sole discretion. And if there's no one in there during that three-month period, then, uh, it, it would be temporarily available to CHS or, or S E K. Uh, the agreement designates the, the lobby area and the adjacent room, um, to be used by the county, uh, CHS and SEC, and any other exhibitor for general fundraising. However, uh, with the exception of art shows and harvest festivals and the like, uh, events hosted by the county, it does not permit retail or commercial activity, and expressly prohibits, uh, making the art displayed generally available for sale. The reason that we're, we're recommending that is, um, allowing sales to be conducted, the property would be more appropriately characterized as a commercial lease, uh, rather than what Mr. uh, uh, McKenzie has put together as a display lease. And if we had a commercial lease, uh, if we allowed the use of the property at no charge to conduct sales, that would trigger both a requirement for a public hearing on the use of the county property, and would also bring into play the, the donation statute under state law, uh, which generally does not permit, uh, us to lease, uh, space for free. So that is why we recommend those restrictions on, on the sales. Staff believes that the agreement, uh, adequately protects the county, uh, against damage or theft of, of the exhibits or loss of equipment or property, there's extensive language in there regarding that. Um, we also we've also, uh, specified that the county is named as an additional insured, uh, and that the licensee shall demify the county. And we also believe it allows us to recover the cost of removing any materials that are left behind, uh, by, by an exhibitor. Uh, that would actually be the fault of the agreement, because, um, i- i- it would require them to, uh, to leave the space as, as they, they moved into it, essentially. Um, so we believe we're protected against that, we don't expect that to happen, but in the event that it does, we think there's, there's adequate protection there. We did send the agreement to, uh, Kathy McVeigh, the president of the Historical Society, and Dwayne Brooks, the, uh, Sidney King, uh, Foundation President. Uh, I think Mr. Brooks has some questions and, and concerns, one that we would definitely recommend changing is the, um, the ability to get the access to the facility, I think we all missed that as an oversight, uh. Uh, the way it's written in the agreement is pretty restrictive, and I don't think that's necessary. We could open it up during, uh, during, at least during normal, normal office hours, and I think some badges, uh, can, can be, uh, distributed. So, um, uh, at this point, we would, if you wanna make any changes, if you want to, staff to, uh, to have further discussions, uh, one of the concerns that Mr. Brooks has, has expressed, we could do that and bring it back before the board. But that is the general framework, uh, at this point for board's consideration.
Alright, board members have questions? Ms. Long, you have questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
You ready to make a motion?
Yeah.
Before you do that, the, part of the reason that we're here is, I, I had an exhibitor, actually someone from Mr. Black's district that wanted to exhibit at the county space. And I was told there wasn't space, and I couldn't understand why in the county building, we couldn't have space for a county to have an exhibit, so I'm glad to see the county part is there and will be controlled by the county. Mrs. Long?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would move that we, uh, move forward with this lease with the addition of badges for those who can access the building, um, or whatever.
If we can.
Access the administration seems safe and, and deemed appropriate.
That's fine, I'll second if nobody else does. Mr. Sealy seconds Mrs. Long's motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number ten. We're finally here, is that you, Mr. Cooley?
We received a, 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 at first, a letter, and then was asked to, uh, actually have a unanimous vote from town council to study the possibility of, of entering into an MOU to, uh, operate, uh, their water and sewer system, along with an MOU that I wanna have with, and, and I know, uh, uh, David Howler wants to, to run their IT. They touch our network now that they have Keystone and are riding on our server in a different place, and we feel like bringing them up to our standards for, uh, training and security.
Oh, security.
And running our network, security and protocols, um, would be a good thing. Um, and they haven't seemed to push back too much on that, but, um, and then, uh, they've asked to have an MOU, which we don't have a whole lot of control over, other than, you know, the, the payment of it, with the Commissioner of Revenue for some help with assessment of their real estate and personal property. Now, that doesn't include billing, it's just the, on the Commissioner's side. So, um, this would, uh, what we're asking for is, if, if you're interested in entertaining those things, then those departments will go to work on working on those MOUs to bring back to you to, to see if they're alright to submit to the town, uh, for their approval, if they, if they agree.
Want to work on the MOU?
I think that in the long-range plan, I think that that's probably advantageous for us.
Probably, okay, is that your motion?
I, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the town request for a memorandum of understanding for utility operations, information technology, and tax assessment services.
Discussion of the request.
The discussion.
And then Mr. Cooley will come back with the MOU if it's ever.
Right.
Decided. Alright, who is the second? Second, Mr. Underwood, seconds Mr. Sealy's motion. Discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cooley, information and calendar items.
As, um, always, uh, we, we've added in, uh, Capital Projects Report, most of those things are running along. Um, we, we are somewhat behind schedule on the, uh, admin addition that's gonna be used for early voting, but, uh, they are looking like they're wrapping those things up, so I'd expect over the next, uh, hopefully, month, month and a half, at their speed. You know, sometime in summer, we'll, we'll finish everything. Um, in that, uh, building, uh, fire, fire department is still running along with the same delays for, uh, block and their floor, so they're trying to work a way around to get the floor poured in the bay area.
There's, there's a cinder block shortage?
Yeah, split face, you know, a.
Okay.
Cut, your regular block, you can get, you can't get a colored cut foot face, and there's at least a row or two of those that go up in the floor pores, too.
I was wondering why they weren't, weren't working on that yet.
That is, and, and it's, evidently, they're custom ordered now, so nobody has any until you and then that, that got pushed back. The chief could give you way more detail than you probably want on that, but that's basically the thirty-thousand-foot overview.
Well, we won't have a truck to put in the building for months and months and months down the road anyway.
It's, it's, it's engine's two years, uh.
Right. Yeah, he's got a truck for it already.
Yeah.
Not, well.
They'll have a new truck in October.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be, we're not gonna be finished in October, I assure you that. But we're making progress. The other side of the building's coming along.
Where did you say, Mr. Cooley, the registrar's office expansion was?
Yeah, it's an, it's an annex, huh?
In, in the project list. Cuz I didn't see it, and I made a note for it.
Maybe they left that off, it should be in their admin addition. I will turn that over to the finance director, but she's not here tonight. We'll get you an update and make sure that's updated, and I'm sorry, that's not in.
Oh, I know, yeah, I mean, I mean, I know we said we were gonna do it, it's just.
Yeah, I didn't.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's in.
I wasn't sure we should do it, but everybody else was. And then the, the project. Think Mrs. Stevens mentioned during public comments a while back, the school finance director. That we hadn't given the schools any money for. Utility increases, and I thought that energy performance project.
Correct.
Was supposed to, was supposed to save money?
That's usually supposed to save them what it costs them, you don't normally have enough to cover utility increases, so those are all based off of. What, you know, projected utility rates are over the life of the loan. And as we've experienced the inflation and the high fuel prices over the last couple of years, I think everybody's not saving the money they thought they were saving, I don't think we're saving on ours because that was based off of a.
I was just gonna say, we, we had the same.
Correct. We're still saving kilowatts, you're still saving the kilowatts on the electric side and BT, you know, however you, you, you're measuring your gas or your propane, but it's gone up.
Mr. Cully, if we'd have had the foresight to include this ten million dollar chiller in that program. Four years ago, it would have been wonderful.
They did one then, it's not just the chiller, they're replacing all the, all their handlers and the VAB boxes and. Uh, that type of thing, and we've had to in the admin building over a two-year, con- two-year period. Replace all of the controllers, we didn't replace every V U, V B, V box, but we had to place the. Controllers because they had gone completely out of service, the.
Right.
Out of life, so that required new wiring and new controllers and new power supplies, uh, running, uh, the VAB boxes. And we had upgraded all of the, what I would call the head-in equipment because all that had gone out of support and life. Um, so, but, if, if they're replacing the actual boxes and the air handlers.
And the piping app, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a lot of work and, and it's involved in that throughout that school.
That's a little beyond the scope of that, uh, performance group.
Correct, yeah. They would tell you, it was like when we replaced the windows here, um, at this building, it wouldn't save you enough energy, but we had all kinds of problems with leaks and. There were all other issues with the windows, so we just added that in and did those windows, even though they said the payback on that. Wasn't gonna work out, but we're way better off, the building looks better, it's better on the inside.
But we, yeah, we were told that, that repeatedly we would save a significant amount of money. And, you know, I guess that was just the demo.
I think the windows were the best thing we did even, it, it had to have saved us a lot more than we know.
Yeah, that was, yeah. They've been a good thing, um.
That was all the questions.
On, on the calendar, we have. Mr. Underwood's constituent meeting, six thirty tomorrow at the Pavilion at Meadow Event, Monday is Memorial Day, Memorial Day service, uh, is there a backup plan for rain?
It's in Town Hall.
Town Hall, because it's not looking too sporty for the.
We've already got Town Hall reserved and I've already talked to.
So, if it's, if it's nice enough and the weatherman's wrong, it'll be on the courthouse lawn, if not, Town Hall, eleven AM. Next board meeting, as we discussed earlier, is the thirteenth at six o'clock here, Juneteenth at the county park, on the seventeenth, that's Saturday. Juneteenth, uh, is actually a holiday now, on the nineteenth, county offices closed, the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, county fair, it's hard to believe, uh, right at the start of summer.
So, it's gonna be hot.
Could be, not as hot as it used to be in July, though. Could be cool. And, uh, don't forget the annual meeting with the Farm Bureau, because we haven't had one since COVID, uh, in Port Royal at the Firehouse, it's not on here, but I'm making that assumption.
It's on here, twenty, seven to six AM, it's on our calendar.
The second, it's the second meeting in June.
It is, and it is at Port Royal.
Well, it's not on here, it's Port Royal, I was guessing about the Port Royal part.
Yeah, Port Royal.
Coral Fire Department.
Yeah.
And that's all I have right now, we'll add some more stuff and we can come back in June.
All right.
Are we gonna eliminate the July meeting?
That was my other thing, it's a note on my book, I just folded it up, July meeting, we had one scheduled, we have not had one in years past. Um, so, y'all, it would be helpful if you decide tonight not in June, therefore, there's anything that we would, uh, advertise for, wouldn't have to be canceled and re-advertize for August.
You have to hurry it up.
What is the date of that one, what would be the date of it if it was, it would be July?
What did we sc- have we?
July twenty-sixth.
It was something.
Mrs. Hall said the eleventh.
She would know, the eleventh, I remember we, we debated that the first couple of meetings of the, this, uh, January. But I couldn't win the day we said, so July eleventh. It is scheduled now, so you would need to cancel it if you plan on canceling.
I don't think we advertised it, did we?
It's not scheduled? We held the date but didn't set it in the board calendar. Uh, it's not scheduled, it's, we held, that, that, that was, anyway, I know we had a lot of discussion around it, so we held a date, but we said we'd come back and schedule it if we need it. So, right now, it's not scheduled, you would have to schedule it.
We can just tell you we don't.
July eleventh.
You know, if you do nothing, it's not scheduled.
I don't think we, uh.
I, I make a motion, we just eliminate the July meeting, Clay, Jeff said if he didn't, he didn't need to be here.
It's not scheduled, you don't need a motion.
If we don't have anything pressing. I mean, and y'all would know better than we would, do we have something pressing that we need to meet in October, in, in July?
So, just a point of clarification, right now, the published schedule does not have July.
Right.
And, and that, to actually change that under the statute, we'd have to put it in the paper and.
We have to advertise special meeting and all that.
Do, actually do more than we did to have the special meeting, to change the regular meeting schedule.
Labor it as it is.
No meeting in July? We don't have to do anything? Mr. Forehand?
One, one more thing, we, I'm supposed to have done this and I've talked to, uh, Mr. Hughes about this. Would you be willing to, uh, entertain at the second, the second regular, we don't have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday of August to do a, 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 a VDOT workshop? You know, roads-type workshop.
What was that day?
Second meeting in August?
Uh, it would be, we don't have a second meeting in August, but it'd be when it was, so the fourth Tuesday, twenty, twenty-second of August. We don't have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday in August.
Can we not do that Tuesday and maybe do Wednesday?
That's fine with us.
No, it's Tu- he said Tuesday in August, I said not Tuesday, Wednesday.
Can we get into the fall?
The only thing is.
Oh, that's fine with me.
Cause we're just cluttering up the summer.
But the thing of it is, if it deals with smart scale stuff, that we want to be on the ball.
Yes, because the.
Smart scale is.
We need to do this sooner rather than later because the, the Route One quarter study is gonna finish.
I would be okay with actually having something in early July or whatever to have that, cause the smart, we don't want to lose out on that, the earlier we can get that in, I mean, we all have stuff in our districts that we want for, uh. Um, I know that Drybridge Road and Mr. Underwood's district is a huge priority and we, we want to, the guy from GWRC.
July as a work session, we wouldn't have to advertise it.
So, the, the issue with J- July, you, you've pointed out there a number of dates and then VDOT has some limited availability in July, so August twenty-second gives us plenty of time. If we did August twenty-second, that would be enough time, the corridor study would be closer to being finished.
Does Mr. Oles be here?
Do we need?
Twenty-second, that's.
Give Mr. Oles from GWRC.
Yes, we've invited Jeff, we've invited the, uh, Ian, we've invited.
Okay.
VRE.
Can we do the twenty-third, which is Wednesday?
Twenty-third is fine.
Twenty-third of August, wedding's over, I'll become, okay.
Okay.
Twenty-third of August then.
I just gotta think we should meet before we meet with VDOT. Does anybody else feel like we should meet just as a board with staff before we meet with VDOT?
No, because they're gonna bring all kinds of stuff to us, you're, you're gonna want to meet after you meet with them to make the final decision. You're gonna want to hear from them.
All right.
This, this, the goal is to be a, a comprehensive transportation work session, like I said, I've invited VRE, I've invited FAMPO, I've invited VDOT, so. The, the goal is to really look at transportation, uh, alternatives, look at funding sources and for the board to be in a position. To start thinking about prioritizing and how to fund transportation projects moving forward.
Twenty-third of August, is that what we said, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, Wednesday, it's the twenty-third? Okay, that's, that's good for me, I'm just trying to put it in my calendar, so I don't forget later.
What time do you want to do it, cause we can do it, it's a special meeting.
Six-ish, same kind of time, six-ish.
It's fine with me.
I guess it, it's gotta say six o'clock and not six-ish, but six o'clock.
Recession to that meeting.
Right.
Your August meeting, uh. So, you don't have to do anything, just save the date. And we'll get everybody invited.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, closing board comments, I, I got a Zoom call now, so, Mr. Forehand?
I agree.
Closing board comments, thank you, excellent. Mr. Black?
None.
Mr. Sealy? Mrs. Long?
None.
Mr. Underwood? And I as well have no closing board comments, motion to adjourn is in order.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We adjourned.